All right, I'd like to call the village council a regular meeting to order. I show February 8th, Tuesday evening, I show the time at 6:09. 6:09. I show we have a full quorum as well with Mr. Mark Elise, WebExing from afar.
So move.
So we'll need a motion to allow him to participate.
Uh, to move.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up. Next up, we have adoption of the agenda. I know there's some changes. Mayor Proten, you gonna read those?
Yep, so under D consent, a new, an addition number six, first reading ordinance amending chapters 10, 32, 97, 110, and 130 of the Code of Marvin, North Carolina regarding enforcement of ordinances.
Okay.
And under H, new business, a new number two, discuss and consider approval of TUP application 22-12819 for construction trailer for the development of 7-Eleven at Marvin Gardens. And a new number four, discussion and consideration for the Barcroft subdivision full-bog release. And I think...
Okay, closed session?
Yeah, but it's, oh.
You know, new call.
Is it not on yet?
There you go.
I got it. Um, K, closed session. We'll move into closed session pursuant to NCGS 143-318-1184 for economic development.
All right, any other additions or changes? Just a confirmation of, for open topics, if there's something, do I add it now?
You don't have to add it now.
All right. Keep reading. All right. I'll need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So move.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, next up is pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cue Bob, he still saying it?
For all!
We're getting a little bit of a delay there, Bob, but we're still, we still hear you.
Surprise you have internet at all.
All right, um, next up, we have public comment period. All are welcome to speak. We ask that you state your name and address, and if you're here, do we have anyone?
Uh, we have none submitted for the public comment period. If you're wishing to speak on the small cell wireless ordinance, that'll be during the public hearing section.
Okay. So that said, anyone out in WebEx land want to speak on behalf of just any, any other topics can unmike and we'll address you. I see nobody wanting to speak, so we will move on to presentations. Next up, we have, uh, reports and updates, managers' report.
The only thing that I wanted to update you on was the Marvin Day flyer that came around on the table. You guys might pick which version you like better. There's a front and a back. Main thing is just the header is different. That's what we came up with, with a graphic design input from PRG.
Oh, there it is. I get the stock of dreams.
Oh, sorry. Oh, she's turning into Joe. I really love Joe.
She's into his spots, I was taking it.
I like the back better. First annual.
Where's that?
Marvin Day on blue. I guess there's another. Here it goes.
Thank you.
This one right here. Yeah, last one, I like this. Does anybody agree with that?
Is it, yeah, is there any reason we're not doing this as dark as this other blue?
They printed print this way.
Is that, well, it could print darker than that, it's just, why do we go to a lighter blue?
Make that blue the same dark, dark blue.
Is that right? What do you think?
We can have it darker.
I, I just think it, I want things to pop. I like, I like them both, too, but first, what?
I think they were trying to have some variations of the date popped out more than this, and it didn't get lost in the same color. If that makes any sense.
All right, well, that's fine. I mean, is that one word?
Uh, I think there's a space.
Supposed to be a space there.
I think it's just, I think it's a space, I think.
There's a space.
There would definitely be a space there and there.
But then look at live music. It might be the...
Trying to squeeze it in.
Yeah, it might be the editing on that first line. We'll see if we can get that fixed.
How about equine event and save a letter, and that would squeeze it in instead of the text?
I know, but then you still have wildlife exhibits, it looks like it's on one earth.
They can play around with movement of the zoom and then the font, depending on the size.
Spacing is the only thing I can see. Looks good.
Is it a little darker here than usual?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just turned on that one.
I think we're missing these bulbs in this list.
Two bulbs.
Oh, okay, is that it?
Um, I don't see, it looks good.
But I like having this down here that we can add.
Um, is there, let me ask you this. Is there room, and can we do a QR code for this?
What does it connect to?
The website?
The website, or is it specifically?
Yeah, we can make one. We can, we can make a QR code to link to, link to our webpage. We still haven't made the webpage, I've got, I've made the raw webpage, but there's nothing added to it yet.
So we would have to make one of these images probably smaller to make it fit.
Right. Well, I'm just, believe it or not, I don't even use QR codes these days.
Would y'all prefer to get rid of one of the images, or cut this part a little bit?
Usually when I'm in the rush shop, I need to see what's on the map.
He's supposed to get it away with the big...
Just to eat. He uses them just to eat.
Summon order for me.
All right, pay attention.
Would y'all prefer to get rid of one of these pictures, reduce one of them in particular, to put a QR code?
Um, I, what's the part of each one represent?
That would be art.
Why don't we, why don't we have owl a little smaller and put it there? Does owl have to be that big?
It's art. It's our mascot.
I mean, I guess what you say, it could be a bit smaller and have a QR code down below.
Yeah, we could go just a little bit smaller with that. It wouldn't lose any detail.
And these are gonna be, what are these for? Where are they going? Just out of curiosity.
Like, that's gonna be our side flyer. Get it out each way.
Are you guys getting a lot of phone calls, and the, first of all?
If you shrink the font size a little bit, you'll get enough room to put a QR code.
Where?
Slide business thing.
If you shrink all this font, just a little bit, you'll get enough room right here to put QR codes.
Why don't we do that, hey, guys?
Slide enough and put it in the bottom corner.
Since we have our seal on one side, if we, if we were to center the font at the bottom, and maybe just a tiny bit smaller, we could put it opposite of our seal.
Okay, so let me recap what we're gonna do. We're gonna make the owl a little bit smaller, business name is a proud sponsor, we're gonna left align that slightly, we're gonna reduce...
No. We're gonna center, we're gonna...
Center this?
Yeah. Because we're gonna, yeah, because we're gonna slide him up, so he can, he can come over, and we're gonna put the QR code in this corner.
Shrink the pictures a little bit if you have to.
No, QR code's gonna go in this corner. I'm still...
How many government officials are gonna take, make a flag?
I think they're onto, I think it'll fit in that corner.
Little bit smaller, sliding him up.
You all, because all the phone, you know.
Business name is gonna be centered.
I can't read, I can't read the whole job.
And then, do we, are we still shooting for two sponsors, main sponsors? Is there enough room for business name as a proud sponsor? We're shooting for one?
No, we've got one, but we need, we need another.
All right, is everybody, hold on, I want you to recap that. Y'all good?
That's what I'm saying. If we're shooting for two sponsors, is that enough room for business name as a proud sponsor? Obviously, that's...
Okay, what that is for is so like...
Holding spot.
Yeah, it's a holding spot, but it's a, so Ballantyne Pediatric Dentistry is a sponsor. So we're gonna make flyers for them that says Ballantyne Pediatric Sponsor. Ballantyne Pediatric Dentistry is a proud sponsor, and they can hand them out and have them at their office.
I see.
So each individual, like whoever has like, you know, place where people come in, we're gonna print out flyers for them, so that they can get them to their customers.
Yeah, I get it.
Who's laughing at me?
I, I get it.
It was a cough.
I get it. It's a weak cough.
And that's just a, that's a holding place.
I get it, but, but don't we want, aren't, didn't we talk about promoting the main pre, pre-names closer?
We can, but this is just for like individual businesses. So whoever's a quick sponsor is allowed there, too.
That was my question earlier, where is this going?
Sorry, I...
That's...
To recap, this is the one we're gonna use. We're gonna center align the business name as a proud sponsor, move the logo up slightly, reduce the size of the owl smaller, put a QR code right in this little area, and then we're gonna change the font, or either fix the spacing on the...
And wildlife exhibits.
Anything further?
Cause that's one word.
Anything further?
Yeah, I just, and again, this is a perfect example, these yellow dots in between, you can't even see them.
Yeah, the yellow dots.
They just, they, you get lost as far as, you know, I mean, that's why you gotta have gold colors versus on white paper, when you do this.
No past tense?
No past tense.
Okay, and then, anything else?
Mm-mm.
Okay, so we're gonna act this all together, and then the map will go here once it's completed, with the locations and times of the sub-events.
Okay.
Planning is going good. This will talk about that in a bit further. I don't think it's on yet. It is. Is it, okay, sorry, I should just wait and then, sorry. That's all I have.
All right. Um, next up, we have planners' report.
Okay, so, I provided you guys a copy of the code enforcement report. It's, I had, wasn't able to form, I didn't have time to like format it how I usually do, and kind of, there's some cases that have already been closed, but this is just kind of a generic one. If you guys have any questions on specifics, you know, feel free to ask. Okay, you guys can ask now, or ask later. But, um, moving into the roundabout, roundabout lighting updates. Got an email from Matt Buckham from Union Power, basically said that the plans and stuff should be there, be to us in the morning.
Wait, what did you say? What's to be done to us in the morning?
The plans, the plan is to be there in the morning. Um, that's what he just said.
Tomorrow morning?
Yeah.
To put the lights in?
I don't know.
He's just gonna come hang out?
Yep, guess so.
Or...
But they are still waiting, he said that he is still waiting on to hear back from Mr. Fincher. That's the only other encroachment that they need for that one other light. All the other ones are going within the, or, I think all within our properties. So, um, so yeah, that should be hopefully up in the next month.
And then, discussion of Ennis Brook, preserve truck connector.
So, we had discussed the possibility of putting the bridge in to connect it a little bit better. Did you have a map pulled up, or can you pull a map up of that general location?
We can talk about this in the work section. It's exactly what Hunter's thought. Ready for that?
Okay, then why not do it?
This is the discussion we have with Derek. We need to hash out and make sure everyone's on board with the change.
Okay, yeah, I'm just, I can't remember what we actually discussed.
Okay, we'll move to the work session while I ask.
And is there any, I mean, that's all I got. Is there any questions or on anything?
Keep it going.
No, we can't.
Trail connector.
We're gonna move that to the work section.
All right, good. All right, next up, we have roads' report.
I don't have any report.
Couldn't talk.
Um, could you, I don't know what we did with this, but just real quick, cause I see it every day, and it, some of it's related directly to Marvin, but can we make sure that someone reaches out to DOT along Waxon Marvin Road, the big ruts that are starting to form? They're getting deeper and deeper as we speak, so those are...
So, we discussed this at the last meeting, and we were doing a shoulder inventory, which we subsequently have done and sent to DOT. That, that covers all of the issues.
It's in there?
Yep.
Okay.
All the issues, that was sent to...
I just hadn't heard an update on that, so I was just...
Their right-of-way team, um, last week sometime, so they'll get to it when they can, if it's within their purview. I did speak with David Gillette over there, who gave me the parameters as to what their jurisdiction is in terms of getting things fixed. Um, he gave me some numbers, and when we get into the roundabout report, we can go over that in more detail, but it was something of the effect of three inches down, six inches, there's some parameters that they work within to make repairs. So, I don't remember those numbers specifically, but Brett's on the phone, and he can probably relate what it was.
Yeah, I just, I was just curious on that, cause I know we've chatted about it. All right, deputies' report. Mason, what do you got for us?
She's leaving.
She's leaving.
Nothing crazy. Um, we got the HOA meeting on the 22nd, so any questions as far as this one?
So the, the HOA being on the 22nd is to discuss the flock system. I know we haven't discussed it with you guys in particular, cause we were waiting to have the meeting with the HOA to see how, how receptive they were to it. So, just so you're aware, that's what we're gonna be discussing, and I'm not sure if y'all are aware of that.
So then, can we put that on our work session to talk about?
We have it on there. Okay, yep.
So, that's on the 22nd?
The HOA president's meeting. It's not on y'all's agenda, it's not, it's not a meeting that y'all generally attend, it's usually staff and the HOA president.
Coffee of councils at the same time, just FYI.
Do you ask coffee as council that night?
I do.
And you believe.
Oh, is it named? It's 22nd?
Well, I'm, I'm sure we can excuse ourselves from the crowd that'll show up.
It's gonna be next door at the church.
Oh, so, what do you think?
It'll be down there.
We had some folks at the last one. It was two big, the cameras, I covered for...
We had planned on Philatol, but I'm not, I'm 99% sure we're not gonna be in there, so...
Maybe by Christmas?
It'll be before the roundabout. He didn't say Christmas, he didn't say 2020.
Yeah, he didn't say what year, he just said 2021. He didn't say Christmas.
Um, and Mason, just real quick, because we're a month away from, or a month and a half away from people going on trips for spring break, any recommendations to homeowners who want, who are gonna be leaving for that period?
Lock your doors.
Lock your doors, I know.
Lock your doors, set your alarm.
Can they call the sheriff's and say, hey, and...
You can do, you can request, you can call the sheriff's office and request to do a well-being check on the house while you're gone.
Okay.
You can set that up to the sheriff's office.
Okay.
Make sure you put all your valuables away, and if you have a safe, please.
And let your neighbors know.
Yeah, let your neighbors know.
Only if your neighbors like you.
My hair crossed already.
Yeah, only if you trust your neighbors, dude.
Yeah, all right.
So FYI on this, I spoke with Derek earlier today, they got one of the speed thing signs up today. Um, they found that they were a little bit shaky at the bottom, so they were adding some concrete, so they were gonna do that with the other one on Waxon Marvin first.
They're moving that sign.
So, but that's, they got the one at, in front of Ennis Brook up today.
Yeah, it's not working, so.
It's not working?
Well, it was working when I went by, whenever I went by.
Well, okay, so, what he told me...
It's getting moved. They're physically like moving it to a different location, cause it's not in the right spot.
He also told me he was having trouble on downloading the software that goes with it to be able to control it, so they're, he's gonna work with our IT guy to get the software downloaded, so that they can set up all the parameters. But they wanted to get them up and see if they'd actually work.
I mean, it was working. I'll say if it worked, I drove by, they're working on it, it was working.
It's working, but it's, it's got some calibration issues, it's...
Yeah, it had to be wrong calibration wise when I went by it.
So, yeah, it only said 30.
It said 90. It wasn't else.
So he said he didn't want... So, to the general public, we're getting these up that, that we went and spent money on for helping slow people down, so we're in progress.
All right, and then, any discussion on camera surveillance monitoring system, we have that?
It'll be at the work session.
At work session, okay. It's on the agenda, so. Anybody have any questions for...
Oh, I'm sorry, it is on the agenda, sorry.
So should we talk about...
I just wanted to let y'all know, we're talking about the HOA, but it's, it'll be on your...
And then, we're gonna talk about it at the work session after the HOA talks about it.
Good, good, okay. So no questions for Mason? Thank you, Mason.
No, thank you, Mason.
Thank you, Mason, as always. Thanks for attending today's afternoon meeting.
It was a good addition to the idea.
Say, they like a copy of the... I'll be very pleased if you listen up.
All right, next up, planning board report.
John is not gonna be attending, so Hunter, he said Hunter would do a great job updating everybody.
Well, planning board...
He wouldn't expect them.
Yeah, I mean, one, the last planning board meeting went very well, and part of the outcome is the small cell language that's on the agenda tonight. I did ask planning board, our goal is, and to have a lot of this actually prior to, or for your joint meeting with them, is to be proactive, and we're trying to prioritize basically having two ordinance slash sections to revise per session, per meeting. And, uh, you know, as I've said multiple times, cause our ordinances need a lot of work, and so, um, that's kind of gonna be our main focus, is to basically have two sections kind of reviewed, and get some feedback from them and recommendations, so then we can package that all together for, you know, full revisions at the end. But other than that, it's going well.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you, moving on, PRG board report. Kim, you taking that?
Sure. Um, so, we just had our regular meeting last week, and we talked about, um, we passed the heritage subdivision sketch plan. We recommend, we're recommending that to county, or we, the Park Second Greenway Board is recommending that to, to council. We updated a bunch of Eagle Scout projects, we're getting the sign up for the park soon as an Eagle Scout project, and we've added some additional projects to the website, and we did a lot of Marvin Day discussion, which we'll go over shortly. And that's it.
All right. Any questions? Thank you, Kim.
You have that one.
Next up, we have, um, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Amended.
As amended, I'm sorry.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, moving on to public hearings, we have public hearing, number one, open the public hearing to discuss and consider zoning text amendment to the village of Marvin zoning ordinance to regulate small cell wireless facilities.
So moved.
Okay, all's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so...
Aye.
I'm trying to click on my system here, and it's not cooperating. Um, so we need to go into...
A minute.
Details.
Is this gonna be you?
Yeah, I'll go ahead while you guys are going through that, to kind of give a brief overview. Um, with a lot of the change in technology, and some of the concerns that that was voiced, especially about the large-scale tower that was brought up with Union County, you know, we kind of were looking at how can we make our ordinances better, and go ahead and have restrictions in place of new, for this newer technology. One of that is the small cell, little 5G nodes, you guys see, there's a couple down Ray Road, um, as an example. But we did not have anything in our zoning ordinance that, you know, provided any regulations for this. Um, our ordinance, our current ordinance only refers to large-scale towers, I think 60 feet and higher. Um, and so, what's being presented tonight is a ordinance that was drafted and, with help of Tom and some of his, his experience, kind of looking at some other municipalities and what, what they regulate, as well as, you know, chaplain's reviewed it, because this newer technology is also, is kind of being pushed heavy from the federal government down to even, you know, our state, and so it really kind of, we don't have a lot of authority as we would larger-scale towers, but the ordinance being presented tonight is pretty much as much restrictive and as much opportunity for these telecommunications companies to get in front of me, as in to apply for a permit, get any type of encroachment agreements, and so on, because basically if we don't have it, and they wanna go within a right-of-way or some of like, you can see DOT, they base, they could do that outright. So, just kind of setting out those guidelines and parameters up for new, for new small cell nodes, for them to co-locate off of any existing utility pole, light pole, as well as modifications for, for those once in.
So if they co-locate on, say, a street light, I'm assuming they have to get an encroachment agreement from Union Power, or whoever?
Correct. Yeah, um, that's kind of, that's one of the main goals.
But they have to come to us first, and then get the encroachment agreement?
Basically. It's what, because prior, if we didn't have this language in place, like, if they got those encroachment agreements, there was nothing that we had that we could regulate and/or like require a permit, anything. Now, if it's within our right-of-way, they still have to then potentially get that, if it's for new, they also have to get that encroachment agreement.
Do we have to let them have one?
Yes. Sorry, 160D 936, subject to the requirements of the section wireless provider, may place, maintain, and must operate on any city utility poles.
Where am I looking?
That's on the third attachment.
Use the right-of-way.
Third attachment.
Purpose and compliance with federal law, that one? 160D 930?
936.
936, geez, okay, hang on, oh, hang on, okay. Sorry, I don't know how to use this yet.
Subsection B.
I got it.
Hunter, can I ask you a question? Of the pictures that are on, on the memo that, that shows there, the three pictures, the one on the right looks the less, you know, you know, the less invasive.
Invasive.
Uh, do we, do we have a choice, like, if, if we're presented with a wireless company, do we have a choice of what to put, or, or what we allow?
These kind of, um, the main goal of this ordinance is, once again, for them to have to come to the village to at least, you know, get these proper applications, and if it's for any type of maybe applications for a new facility, this is where I can say, hey, like, have we looked at, potentially looking at co-locating off of existing utility poles? Um, the only thing there is, is if it's like Union Power, or if it's a utility, obviously, mainly Union Power's probably the only one, or if it's a light pole like that, would still kind of be Union Power, like, for example, the roundabout lighting or something like that, they then have to get the approvals from that, that agency. If it's, um, so if it's Union Power, they would have to get that encroachment to use their, their pole to put their facility on.
We do have some limited language in a sense, it's on subsection C sits, small wireless facilities and associated utility poles or village utility poles shall be blended with the natural surroundings as much as possible. Colors and materials shall be used that are compatible with the surrounding area. So it gives us a little bit of room. It also mandates, and it's part of this ordinance, that it's an administrative approval, because they didn't wanna have one of councils subject to this, because it's a, as long as they meet the requirements, it's approval. So it's looking technically to see if there's an administrative process, and it, and it applies, and also I think it's to reduce pressure, but it's coming from the FCC, and then state law, and then the rest.[1624.33]
So if they want to come into my neighborhood and put up on these nodes, we can say the pole that it goes on, because right now we just have like decorative light posts. So the poles, so they don't have any, you know, like Union Power, I mean, they're, I guess they are Union Power lights, but they're the decorative ones.
They will likely co-locate on that and put a, a node at the top.
Okay, they wouldn't come and put like a, they couldn't come in and put like a separate pole?
We're gonna encourage them, and we can have certain discretion with the co-location. Should be a priority to co-locate. And then, and then with their, in a small wireless facility, it's so technical, and that's why we cross-reference all of the state statutes. It's defined, and it's defined as a certain size. I will say they're really not that small, but by the time you get them twenty and thirty feet up in the air, they look a little smaller. There's also guidelines and parameters, if they put a new pole, I believe it's fifty foot in any area and then forty in residential, we've got that included. And then the additional infrastructure is also capped with height.
What do you mean the additional infrastructure?
The additional node that they're often gonna put.
Oh, okay, on top of.
They can't go thirty or forty feet up. I think it's a ten foot.
It's a ten, additional of what the minimum or are, yeah.
So.
Close forty feet total, I think.
So, so we basically can't say, there's no way that we can just say no, they can't come in, but we can at least have some so, say so in where they're going and how they look?
Yes, we can have some parameters and we've got to be reasonable with it. And then it has to be on an administrative level, because they don't want village councils up, basically using discretionary review and now using other standards. They want it to be very technical.
So, so basically if they, if somebody comes to the village and says, we want to, we want to co-locate on, you know, ABC neighborhood, council will never hear about it? Not now, not now, not now.
Probably reviewed, but the state, state law is very express, and I think that was in the memo, that they said, this, this has to be staff reviewed, it has to be administrative. And one, they don't want it to get political. Two, I don't think that'll put undue pressure on you to try to disapprove something that you can't. Three is to expedite the process, because there's also time parameters of which these have to be processed.
What's the time parameter?
Forty-five days, I believe.
From start to finish?
No, when I receive a formal application.
From start to finish?
Yeah. Like it basically where I have to review it and give them an answer.
So it's basically gonna be your decision?
Yes.
So.
And then that's the thing.
By the way.
Yeah, Bob?
Just if in, in preparation for the meeting, you know, we're all used to seeing the, the 5Gs that are around the Blakeney area, which look like stove pipes, they're all black. But I was surprised, I went down Community House Road towards, if you will, Johnston Road, so, so you're going outwards Cantina, 1511. The first roundabout, there's a wooden light pole, it'd be a power pole, and then one of these things hoisted right up on top of it, it's like a silver, like they don't even go together, it's like you got wood, and then you have this metal stove pipe coming out the top of it. It must be about thirty or forty feet here. Take a look at it the next time you go down Community House. The first roundabout, just look to your right, you'll see it, just look up.
By the YMCA right there?
Uh, before, before that.
Okay.
No.
Okay. And so, yeah, what I'll mention is, once again, like the purpose of this is really to promote co-location, because if you think about our main, like, really for telecommunications companies and for them to push the 5G like they want and stuff, like, it could probably be done using the existing power transmission lines running down our main thoroughfares. I mean, it's not like, that's kind of what our goal would be, instead of having them install new poles along certain parameter areas.
So what if they come in and they say, we want to put it in ABC neighborhood, and we're like, we don't want them in a neighborhood, it's gotta be on like, a main drag. Can we, can we parameter that? If it's like, like if they want to put it in my neighborhood and they want to put it on Wingfoot, well, Marvin Road backs up to Wingfoot, so can't we say, put it on Marvin Road?
We can look in the areas and, and get them to show where they are, where they need to be, where co-location is, and we've already put in here that we're encouraging them in non-residential areas.
Okay.
So, so if, if you get into the middle of the neighborhood and there's no cell service, you look back at the, the first page of the statute, the North Carolina law, the deployment of wireless, and this is the state law, the deployment of wireless infrastructure is critical to ensuring first responders can provide for the health and safety of all citizens. Therefore, it's the policy of the state to facilitate the placement of wireless communication support devices. The state and feds want this to go through, but we're gonna try to regulate it as much as we can. And the providers, they're gonna say, we've got a right to be here, but they, they don't want to fight either. They want it to go through the administrative process. What they should do is call and try to meet with Hunter, talk to him, get some locations. But they do have some, uh, they've got a lot more ammunition than they did five years ago.
And with, with this ordinance, we've got as much ammunition legally that we can have?
I think so. There's always gonna be ways to look at these, revise and update, is there legal challenges? And just like.
So I mean, we can always update our ordinance as if anybody, there's a.
Somebody comes up with a great idea, or something is working in one of your larger cities, that really has the financial capability to take on one of these wireless providers? Because if, when they challenge, they're gonna be challenging all of the North Carolina law, and they're gonna come at it with everything they have. And you want to have provisions, and our goal was first to get something in the books.
Yeah.
Because we looked at this and I was like, all we have is the superstructure. Uh, we've got to get something in the books. I think this is a good ordinance. Can it get better? Can we review it, look what other people are doing? And it was drafted off of what some other local governments are doing, but are these gonna get better over time? Is this tested? Yeah.
When they went into Tullamore, they was gonna put one up at the front by the entrance and one diagonally by a retention pond, so it's gonna, gonna be either, right, Hunter?
Uh, I mean, basically, I was started this was that one of the town communications reached out, I mean, it wasn't like any type of formal application or any of that, and they'd have two proposals in Tullamore. And so, you know, we did inform them about the potential large scale tower that was being proposed at the county level, and, you know, I haven't heard anything from them since.
So there's no application right now?
No, there, there was no formal application then or anything.
Then or now?
Yeah, not as of right now either. The other thing that I want to mention, where we're talking about like fighting stuff, is there's certain things in here that talk, that references are like engineer design standards and stuff. In certain areas, like, if we really want to push it and fight it, like, there's certain sections of our like subdivision ordinance, or in those engineer that, like utility poles or the stuff can't be so many feet within a sidewalk or other things like that, so there's certain areas where we might be able to then say, hey, like this is what our ordinance states, and then that's another way to promote co-location.
When they came in, they didn't call Hunter or anybody, they called HOA presidents. And if you, when the meaning they have over here, I think they should tell them, if anybody contacts you, you notify Hunter as soon as possible.
They can't, they can't give them, especially if we're having an ordinance, they can't give them permission to do that, right?
They want to get, see which POAs will agree to rent space and then come to the town. Because if they go to one and the POA owns the.
Common areas.
The common areas or owns the lighting, some of them do, and they're like, they're private entity and they say no, then they're like, they're gonna go to the other POA.
Got it, okay.
Yeah.
That's interesting.
Just something to automatically make sure all HOA presidents know. I don't know if all of them understand what's going on or not.
Well, it's something we can talk about at the HOA presidents too. Are they able to install these on private property?
What do you mean by, by per this ordinance?
Private.
They can't, they can't, they can't come on into my yard and plant one of them.
No, they would have to have, they would have to have approval.
So, but they can, you can, a property owner can say, yes, you can put it here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Unless they, if you have a utility right of way on the front of your property, they can go there.
Okay.
Right, but that's within, that's, that, that would be with most likely either within our right of way, DOT right of way, or if it's a private rose right of way, and so then they have to get those proper encroachments with that, that entity.
And they would still have to get.
I'm thinking a little outside the box, and I'll, I'll get around to what I'm coming back to and stuff. How do you see us using 160D dash nine forty for the historic preservation? Do we using that? Do we have anything historic? Is the heritage district considered that?
No.
What, what is, well, they, listen, that dirt was, was historic dirt. That's why they, that's why they delayed the roundabout, so, I, and I think, by the way, all dirt is historic. It's been around forever, so.
Really?
Yes. They, they held up that, you remember?
I do remember.
So they, but they held it up because they, we were dealing with historic dirt.
I would agree.
So are we even gonna utilize this, or do you see us anywhere in your view where we could apply this?
If we create a historic district, which is valid, and you have to go through the very statutory process, you have to have, you have to do an inventory, you have to go through the states, I don't know which historical industry, governmental agency it is, but you have to prove, and you have to have a, you approve a local historic district, but you can't just throw one, it has to have the qualifying structures and surroundings. Or it could be, bless you, it could be a federal historic structure, and those could protect, but we can't just protect the historic dirt.
Wouldn't we have a good shot?
But I think that's, I like the creativity.
Since the Rosses originally lived on the property adjacent here, wouldn't we have a good shot, I mean, they're buried in the cemetery across the street, to be able to get the heritage district in a historical district, given the history and Marvin being here dates back to, you know, historic court case a hundred years ago?
Yeah, but if you have one structure that's surrounded by predominantly new construction, it's not gonna be, I don't think the statutory requirements. And I haven't looked at those lately. I was involved in creating one, but it was over a decade ago, but it was data to be collected with all the structures, and they're called supporting and non-supporting structures. Supporting structures are the ones that have the sufficient age and historical data, and then the non-supporting are supposed to come in and blend in.
I also noted on one of the things about the small wireless facility shall cause no signal or frequency interference with public safety facilities. Does that include also homes? Not just public facilities, like, and what's the mitigation process? If, if they put a pole up and all of a sudden it starts interference with, they got, is that the mitigation, they gotta take it down?
Private stuff cannot interfere with public stuff, but you can interfere with private stuff all you want to. There's the, the way that, correct me if I'm wrong, but, I mean, I've read many, many different warnings on, on electronics and stuff, that if you buy, you're subject to your laws, you cannot interfere with public stuff, such as air traffic control.
I understand that, but if they, if they put, if it's a, assume it's a private or a public company, it doesn't matter, and they put a pole up and all of a sudden you start, or a neighborhood starts getting interference because of it, what's?
They're gonna comply, there's gonna be federal standards, frequency emissions, and those are gonna preempt local regulations, but it's gonna be highly regulated. Now, you put that in if you're, if it's not functioning properly, but it should be designed to the federal specifications, but that doesn't mean everything's gonna work. And if for some reason it is causing interference, we'll approve that and get them to remedy.
So we put that in there?
Well, that's also, well, everything is subject to, once, when they inquire and get the proper application, they gotta have their engineer plans, like, for example, the two in Tullamore, and like that's, they sent me preliminary plans, they didn't submit anything else, they were just trying to get information on what's needed. But then that's like where another thing, it's like staff will review that and it can be submitted, reviewed for our engineer to meet those standards and, and so on. So I mean, there's a, that review process will take, I mean, to make, to ensure all compliance with our ordinances as well as any state or federal that, you know, can be, I mean, applied here. But at the same time, those telecommunications companies, for the most part, they're gonna be following those standards, because, I mean, they're supposed to.
So do, do we know at all what the, the effective range of these things are? I mean, like, just for background information, because first of all, I think that what makes sense is they're gonna put these things where they're the easiest access for, for maintenance and e- even installation. So they're gonna want to try to get them as close to main thoroughfare as possible, I would imagine, just for logistics. But how, you know, like, what is their range? How many are they gonna have? Like, if you have a Millbridge neighborhood, obviously you're gonna have to have multiples throughout the neighborhood, and, and, you know, with a fairly short range. If they were talking about two at Tullamore, they'd probably have to have forty of them in a neighborhood the size of Millbridge, so what is the?
I don't have the, I, I don't have the, like, the official on that. The way I, when I looked at them, the way I explain them to people is they're basically like Rifi, Wi-Fi routers, that, I mean, I mean, you gotta think, or even if it's like a mesh network, like it's smaller, smaller thing that broadcasts as compared to the larger tower. And also, you know, think about, you know, along those main thoroughfares like in Blakeney and stuff, I think they are like, there's a couple every so hundred feet where they're on those light poles. It also could be due to the number of people that they're, they're impacting, as in, you know, if you have more people utilizing it, it might slow down service and they might need more to, to provide the, the adequate service there. So I, I, so the same way, I don't know, and I, and I don't really know if, you know, I, like I said, the two in Tullamore, from my understanding, that was what, yeah, was to be covering that whole neighborhood. I'm not sure the accuracy of that or how that was, but that's what I got at.
I'd, I'd be curious to know that, just for, for information as to what we're gonna be looking at as far as a potential impact on Marvin. I mean, we're, there's only so much we can do by law and how they're placed and all that stuff, but it would maybe give us a little bit better understanding of what they're gonna be bringing to us as we get down with our population, you know, increases and whatever, and, and, you know, with the technology as it comes, I mean, how many are we gonna get in Marvin? Two hundred, two thousand, what, what are we looking at?
It, I, I'm not sure. I kind of wish John Jones was, was on the night, because he provided me some information that even kind of sparked this to get where it's at here now today, was that he had a, a friend that was, lives in Pipers Glen, and they, one of the telecommunications providers came in, wanted to put up one of these nodes in, they tried their HOA, I think, tried to fight it and lost, basically all they could do was, once again, our standards based on the aesthetics and so on. So with that being said, it's like, I don't really know, it's still, I think what, for example, the minimum distance or what we can require, it just says reasonable distance. And.
What is reasonable? That's, and that's the thing, is like, the more we know, the more we have, the more we know what we can fight and we can't fight, right? So what is reasonable? Or if we know what's.
Right now, we would need to get. Get assistance and help on that, and that gets to spacing, but right now, the, the statute says you can impose reasonable distance requirements, so yes, we use that, that terminology. One, it can change over time, because it should get more powerful, and, and their, their bandwidth should get bigger on what they can take in. Two, there could be a challenge if you do, you can't have them for, because a lot of people are gonna, well, let's use it, you can have it for five hundred yards. Well, it's not really reasonable for y'all just to pick five hundred yards.
Right, that's why I'm saying, I'd like to know what the technology provides, so that we can have a reasonable argument as to where it's placed.
And I think if we look at one where we think it's, they're, they're bunching them, I think that's when we're gonna get a consultant, we may even have to get somebody in the, in this area that can tell you.
And based on that, I'd like to know what the potential impact is gonna be on our community. Are we looking at two hundred or two thousand of these things coming in potentially to service this area with the, you know, whatever their range is, so that our public knows what's coming? I mean, they, they have the right to know what is coming down the road and what, what we're gonna be up against, and know also that we have a very limited, you know, authority on this. This is federal and state mandates, and we don't have much control over it.
What, what does Union County have?
They don't.
They don't have anything, so you can just come out here and throw one up on.
I mean, yeah, like, for example.
Running down.
They, from my understanding, when I talked to the county about this, they fall under the same thing, it's just their normal telecommunicate, I mean, well, sorry, how do I say this? I guess they don't fall under their telecommunications tower like ours, because there's that height. I think it's, like I said, it's either sixty feet, I think is the minimum. And, you know, that's where, like, you know, you think about Ray Road and stuff, basically what happened was those telecommunications companies got the approach, they got the approval from DOT to put in, put in the right of way, and they just probably, they didn't have to get any approval from the county, and that's just.
So I mean, you know, as much as I'd like to be able to say, yeah, this is what we can control, like in terms of like our, you know, in terms of Marvin, I mean, this is, I mean, they can just skirt right, I mean, right across the street and throw them up in unincorporated Union County, so, you know, that, that might be a nice selling point for people who want to annex on into Marvin, so we can have a little bit more say.
Joe, when we had the Mineral Springs meeting and had some commissioners there, they brought it up, that they would, they were gonna have to say something to the county to get them to strengthen their rules and rates.
Yeah, let's put that on our county, our meeting with the county.
Helen, we talked about that, so.
Now, what about Wuma? Have you guys talked about this in Wuma yet?
Well, it's been, it's been brought up more of what was happening, and then it got resolved, we gave them an update, they shared with us what they experienced and stuff, but it hasn't really gone any further, but to a point, it probably needs to go to county, and we can put that on our.
We discussed the B3 itself.
Yeah.
We haven't discussed the Vs yet.
No, no, we haven't discussed this.
Wesley Chapel, do they have anything like this?
Not to my knowledge.
No.
So, yeah, and so just to clarify, like I said, we really can't, I mean, this ordinance is not, I mean, like I said, to get regulations in place. There's a lot of still uncertainty, as in, of like, once again, just because a lot of this was put in with 160D and those, those statutory changes in the last couple of years. And all that was driven, as Chaplin mentioned, is that the large scale towers are so heavily regulated by the municipalities, the telecommunications companies went to the, the feds and was like, hey, we can't provide our adequate cell service or, or stuff that you guys are wanting in your broad, you know, the broadband infrastructure and all this other stuff, and that's how, that's where we're at, and so.
So, so we're definitely taking extra steps more than any other municipality around us to protect as best we possibly can our residents.
Yes.
So, so help, help me out, I was reading a little bit about fees, and then there's maximum fees that we would get as, as a town Marvin per pole? Did I read that right?
Yes, so part of it is that 160D, I think, states that the first six poles on the application. Yes. So part of it is that one sixty D, I think, states that the first six polls on the application for some that the maximum is a hundred dollars. And for each additional poll is like fifty dollars.
Just for the year?
No, 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 for the application, so application.
Oh, okay.
And then and then do they have to like, go ahead.
Well, I was where I was going with this is like, like when we had years ago, the cable, we got a little piece of everything that was, whether it was the vehicle tax, cable, all those things got, would there be anything that we could capture? I mean, if this is gonna happen, if what I'm hearing is we have very little say, is there anything that we can capture from a royalty standpoint of them allow, you know, having them in here? And where I'm going with this, because if we can't fight this, I say, let's embrace this to to a point. Because if I look at the first thing that you sent out, if I got this right, you sent some pictures. I like pictures. So that said, that Marvin small wires facility. And here's where I'm going with this. If you scroll down that first page you show us, to me, I'm looking at the third picture on the right, and I'm seeing trees above it. So I'm wondering, how high does that have to be? And I'm looking at how offensive that is. Why couldn't they design something that can actually go on a house rooftop? And it that looks like a smokestack to me that goes on a rooftop and you strategically place them on rooftops within the community. Who sees that?
So tell us about one thing.
I'm wondering if there's. That's why I was asking about, can you put this on private property? Can someone, an individual say, I have this house and I'm gonna allow the communications company to put this on my roof?
I just have a different attachment. How many people have those for you?
Exactly my point. That's 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 where I'm going with this. If you're saying we can't control this, why not embrace it and say, okay, let's be strategic about this? How many do you need in your neighborhood? How many do you need in your neighborhood or everybody's neighborhood where you strategically place them on homes? Now, when it comes to servicing, that becomes another issue because they have to go on site, probably get up on their roof to 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 service it. But that's what they're signing up for. So.
Do you how much do you like have insurance on your home?
Yeah, well, we all have insurance.
No commercial activity, but that outside commercial activity.
I mean, if you think they're gonna go away, your rates are gonna go very high.
And the the I think your question was two part. Number one, can we receive any royalties towards that? What you're referring to in terms of cable is from a franchise agreement and statutory limitations are different on the small. You can correct me if I'm wrong, but the franchise agreement statutes are a little different.
That is completely different. And and we are limited about fees. In fact, statute says you can only do what's in here. Now, if we get a request for one of our polls in our fee schedule, you just pass that. So that's easier than zoning. You pass that on the consent agenda.
On consent.
So you impose fees, but we can go in and amend that. And also, if they if we do have polls and they make a request, we can charge them fifty dollars a year.
Well, that was gonna be my next question. Can we charge them like an annual fee?
For our polls?
For our polls?
The you get you get to charge a permit fee once for the others.
What polls what polls do we have?
I don't know. That's.
Okay.
Not not many. Uh, we have sixty days to establish a rate for that if we get it, because I'm not sure.
Are the lights and the roundabout hour polls?
Nope, Union County's, I mean, even power.
We just paid for the power.
So we don't have polls in.
I don't think we have much because we talked about that where we can we can amend the fee schedule as we go on.
It's in there in the. Yeah.
Do you rent or do you buy polls in roundabouts? Because HOAs, they take in the light poles an hour, they rent them and they pay rent on them for ten years and they become theirs.
I think we're just paying for the power.
Yeah, we're just paying for the power and the roundabout lighting.
Yeah.
You're not paying rent?
No, Union Power still owns it and they get the encouragement agreement with the property owners.
Because I know the HOAs, they uh, you you rent them for ten years and they become yours.
So what is your takeaway from this? What are you trying to obtain?
Well, like I said.
We just want approval on the ordinance.
Yeah.
Are there any changes that y'all want to see in the ordinance that we can?
You still have to allow public comment.
Yeah, we're gonna get there in a second.
And I think my point is.
We're still discussing.
We can learn as as more local governments start imposing this and some get challenged, then there are more to look at. We probably can make it better, but having something on the books is better than having nothing on the books.
Like Union County.
And I think we've cross referenced the statutes a lot and we're like in accordance with the provisions so that we're trying to maximize what we can do.
So I would definitely say let's make sure that we're talking to the county at our retreat about this. And like you guys at the next Wuma meeting, definitely bring that up.
Yeah. And like I said, to get some on the books and now basically it requires these telecommunications companies to at least submit something. So then we do one, we're in the know if, you know, if they're going up or the potential of them going up instead of them just going up. As well as, yeah, I mean, when it comes down to like the fees and stuff, like we, the fee is capped. We also can be reimbursed for any any engineer design or any engineer review fees. So, you know, that's what a lot of on the plan was, that's what a lot of municipalities are doing and, you know, potentially charging a ridiculous fee for that or something where they have to submit engineer plans and stuff like that, which that's already a requirement anyway. It's just then since we contract, it just reimbursed based off of our engineers' repeat time. So.
Very well, public.
Yeah. So I'm gonna turn this over to first public hearing, anyone who wants to. See, Gary, you always have something good to say.
Three minutes.
If you wanna comment or any comments, we we're allowing, is it three minutes?
Three minutes.
Three minutes on the public comment portion.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm signed up to speak if it's my turn.
Yeah, he can go ahead. He is signed up.
Okay, yeah, we can hear you. So just have your name, address, and we've got you three minutes.
Got it. I remember the drill. My name is Gary Hare. I'm a resident and a board member of Amber Meadows right around the corner. Thank you first for the opportunity to make public comment. We're very appreciative of that. We've also been very appreciative of your concern about our concerns, and we appreciate the support you've shown in the past. We're grateful that you're being proactive about things like this small cell tower. And we're glad you're including in your discussions consideration of how to do that ordinance. We support the enactment of this of this ordinance. And we know that the final product is the result of a lot of hard work by Hunter Nestor and others. We also know that North Carolina statutes do not leave a lot of flexibility. We do have a couple of suggestions. First, we would suggest that any degree or amount or ability to consider public safety and reasonable tower spacing in this matter is very important. We hope you will exercise as much latitude in those areas as you have. We believe that a public safety fall zone, first, a setback, if you will, should be a distance of at least the total tower height from any residential structure. We actually think tower height plus five or ten feet is more logic. With the potential proliferation of these small towers from various vendors, we also think it equally important that proper space can be considered. I do not pretend to be an expert in small cell tower technology, but surely a spacing of towers of perhaps five or less per linear mile would be sufficient. Finally, and especially considering the small geographic footprint of the Amber Meadows community and the resulting very close proximity of our homes, we do not believe Amber Meadows could be an appropriate location for placement of small cell wireless towers. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Gary.
We have Tanya McCauley of Tullamore signed up to speak. I do not believe she is on, but she has submitted her comments to me and I'm I'll read them if you wish.
For on behalf of Tanya.
You got three minutes.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Mayor, Council.
I am on. I am on. Hello?
Where you? Oh, where you at? Oh, you're okay, calling user two.
Calling user two. You weren't able. You are user two.
Hey, look, I'm.
All right. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, go ahead. Mr. Mayor, Council, okay, Mr. Mayor, Council, Administrator and Staff. My name is Tanya. Y'all know me very well. I'm the president of the Tullamore Homeowners Association. First, I would like to take this opportunity, thank you all for your continued support for the residents of Marvin. Your hard work and dedication for this community does not go overlooked. First and foremost, we believe a small wireless facility ordinance is needed in Marvin. I am speaking tonight to request two revisions to the ordinance that you have proposed in front of you tonight. We know, we do know that there is a North Carolina statute in place that provides restrictive language as to what Marvin can have in their ordinances regarding small wireless facilities. That being said, we still believe there are two areas in the Marvin ordinance that should be revised. First, under section one six zero D dash nine thirty five E of the North Carolina statute, it states that you can charge a hundred dollars per facility for the first five small wireless facilities addressed in an application. Currently, as written, you guys are only charging fifty dollars. We suggest that you charge up to a hundred just to get the maximum amount possible. My second suggestion, under section one sixty D dash nine thirty five D C five of the North Carolina statute, it states that you can deny an application based on public safety and reasonable spacing requirements. Currently, the public, we believe that the Marvin ordinance does not have the public safety or reasonable spacing language that it needs. We request that you add language that will require a fall zone equal to the small wireless facility height from all residential dwellings. Also, we request that you add language that will require these facilities to be spaced apart at a distance of a thousand feet if they are not concealed or co- co-located, for instance, on a light pole or something. Lastly, I would like to reiterate that Tullamore does not want any small wireless facilities in our neighborhood. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Tanya. Um, who else do we have? Anyone else sign up?
No one else has signed up.
I'm gonna ask if anyone else wants to speak at this time that did not get a chance to sign up. Well, like, thank you both for speaking up on that. I I don't know if the council wants to entertain that before we move forward.
You you did already pass the fee schedule with the established fees. So if you wanna change that fee to a hundred, we would have to bring that back at a future meeting.
Yeah, because all the ordinance just states of the that it basically have a fee set by the adopted fee schedule.
Yes.
So the fee schedule is on the consent agenda. We already kind of put that in for that. So, yeah.
I like that.
A hundred dollars?
For the first five. It can be up to a hundred.
Thank you, Chaplain.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's that. That's how it reads.
Yeah.
It's just kind of confusing.
It's um, one hundred dollars per facility for the first five small wireless facilities plus fifty for each additional.
I mean, let's get as much as we can.
I thought there was something about per application.
That that was it. Um, a hundred for the first five and then fifty per application. And then.
Okay.
And that's, um, those are the applications. And then if we have polls, we're limited to, I think, fifty dollars per poll.
Okay. Is it? Can I ask a question? Is it a perfect question? Um, I'd ask Chaplain, we had two mentions of the fall zone and then public safety issues not being accounted for. I was asking Chaplain, since those aspects are already covered in one sixty D, I don't think they have to be explicitly stated in this section because there is a section in small cell notes that apply back to one sixty D.
Yeah, and I pointed you to this section, but I should read it because if you ask, they need to hear it as well. Under, um.
Do y'all understand that question?
Yes.
Okay.
Under subsection B four of your ordinance, it says, the village shall process the qualifying small wireless facility applications in accordance with the timeframes that we've got to process it quickly and requirements set forth in nine thirty five. And we can say the requirements, if you wanna, we could say including requirements, um, to protect public health and safety and reason, well, it just says requirements. I'm scared to start barking and everything because there's so many requirements in here. But I think the requirements are that we can have regulations. And fall zones would be one of them. So I think when when they're looking at this, staff's gonna look to see if it's safe.
But but it does it specifically have a fall zone in one sixty D?
It does.
It has, um.
Sorry.
No, no, I've gotta find where that is.
Me too.
I know that we have public health and safety objective design standard.
I think one of the reasons why this was brought up is because the fall zones that they had in place for these major towers are not the length, the height.
Which one is it? Only one sixty D.
You know, like the the length of the pole. Am I correct in that, Gary? They they were they were not the full length of the pole for the fall zone for safety zone?
Page two is the definition.
Was that right?
Yes.
That right?
Yeah, right.
Also, that was that's why I think that's why they're bringing this up is that is that is it written in this one about the the height of the pole being the fall zone?
That's a wireless support structure.
Yeah, it's a big boy. Let's get I honestly be to be honest, and I'll have to double check with our engineer. But one, anything within, if it's in the right way, like, for example, D O T, certain of those structures or poles are gonna have to be either breakaway and or if they're out of the right way, meet the safety standards for, you know, to be out of the right way and stuff like that. So it's kind of the same applicable language there.
Well, if we're talking about, well, what they suggested was away from residential structures for safety for that, for those fall zones to be the distance of the height of the pole. But I think, and that's why I'm just curious what it specifically says in here, because I know that the big towers, it's not the full distance. Like, if the post was to fall straight down, it's not that full distance, less than.
It just said may be expected to fall, so it doesn't specifically say the height.
Right. So that's which that's what they're asking is that we are specific on that because for safety as far as if somebody was to hit the thing and it fall or wind blows it over, lands on somebody's house if it's within that. And they're they're asking about residential, not anything else, just residential.
Residential structures.
Right.
So Chaplain, just to clarify, it says fall zone in the one sixty D. However, it does specify in there that that's for wireless support structure, so that does not apply.
Yeah, wireless support structure is ones that are under, um, it's one thirty two to nine thirty three. Those are your tall, those are your structures.
Yeah, it's what.
Well, we would consider the towers.
Yeah, the telecommunications towers.
So it's not considered like throwing it on a light pole?
I'm sorry?
It's not considered like putting it on a light pole?
No, that's not a their their definition of a fall zone is the area which a wireless support structure may be expected to fall in the event of structural failure, but it's the wireless support structure.
But not a tell like not like a white post?
A wireless support structure, this is so complicated. I'm sorry. It's a that is your, that has another definition. And that's your, uh, the newer existing structures such as a monopole lattice tower, guide wire that is designed to support or capable of supporting wireless facilities. A utility pole or city utility pole is not a wireless support structure.
Okay, so we need, so can we put something in there?
Well, we think we have most of our regulations with the wireless support structure in our current ordinance.
Telecomm, yeah.
And that's what we said. We said we we already regulate the big ones, the towers, but we had nothing with the smaller wireless facilities.
So they, yeah, they're defined as two different things. This one, small cells, I think, anything under si- fifty feet. Like, uh, like Chaplain was saying, but then once it hits, I know sixty feet or higher, or it's either maybe forty five feet or, yeah. Per our ordinance in our definitions, it then becomes defined as a telecommunications tower is what we define it in our zoning ordinance, which are the larger scale towers.
Right. I'm not worried about those. I'm worried about the smaller ones, right?
Right. And that's what we're that's what we're talking about. But the definition that everybody's talking about the fall zone that is expressed in statute references.
The big ones.
The big ones.
So can we specifically put something in there about the small ones then?
Well, that's where. If most of them that are on the poles, then they're not counting the utility poles as the as the height of it. So what's the point?
So can we do that? Or something, we add it.
If it's a new, like I said, that's where, I mean, Chaplain stated with.
We know, all you're doing is attaching a device, a cell tower device.
I know.
On a pole, but that that is. The pole's already there. Is there a fall zone to that pole already?
That's what I'm asking.
I don't think there is one.
And can we, then can we add it and say...
You gotta go back and, 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 it's like, they would be grandfathered in.
Wow. I don't think you can, because it says that they can attach to existing poles.
So how about standalone structure? If we, can we write something, if it's not on a utility pole that's already existing, and they have to create their own standalone one, can we write some ordinance up for that? The one that was gonna put in Telmore, thirty feet tall, that's what I'm saying, but it wasn't attached to it.
Retention pond?
And it was a separate one, correct?
Be a separate structure.
Yeah.
So that would fall under what he's saying?
That would fall under what I'm saying about... But you can't go back and do anything that exists.
That is, each new pole can be, shall not exceed, the city, okay, that's under 160D 936.
Okay.
That sets forth our regulations on what they can do. And, well, it cannot exceed fifty feet, and then there's a, they put in a whole subsection, subsection E says forty feet, and residential where the utilities are installed underground.
Where do you see that?
How much taller does a node on top of a light post make?
That is ten, each small wireless facility, this is other D2, may not exceed, extend more than ten feet above the utility pole.
Like a subzero refrigerator, like, right there, like, side by side?
I'm just, like, I mean, the way I tell people, it's like literally kind of six to ten foot refrigerator on top of the light pole.
That's not big there?
I mean, six to ten feet is kind of where their size varies of the node itself.
But, okay, but it's not that.
Thirty, about thirty inches in diameter too, right? You ever seen it?
Yeah.
Which is the size of a refrigerator. It, it's deceiving, because they're up on a pole.
Right, right.
But they're the size of a refrigerator.
And also, so...
So...
I just want to clear, so also though, as we kind of, we said it earlier, for the new poles, we referenced 160D, which talks about it shouldn't be placed anywhere, that we have the right to deny if it's any, you know, impact on public sa, or public safety and all that stuff. If we kind of then get into really regulating it, I think that leaves it broad enough where then we do have potentially authority to deny, and that can be our justification, it doesn't necessarily have to be in the ordinance. Because that's, it's still kind of unclear, basically, because all I said, one, the spacing requirement just says reasonable. I know some ordinances do have addition, like some spacing requirements.
Where is that in our ordinance? Do you, or is that just cross referencing that?
Cross referencing the 160D, and it's referencing our ordinance for the requirements of not, 160D 935 and 936.
If we can just let him find that and let him read it, so that we can absorb it and then let the public know, if you feel comfortable with that, Chaplain. So I think that meets the same purpose.
Correct.
But I don't think we're gonna be able to go around existing poles if they choose to attach.
We can't do that, they're already there, and there's already language, they can place them up.
But if you're creating a new pole, and it's in a space, and it's fifty feet high, it should not hit any structure if it happens to fall in any direction, fully fall...
160D 936.
Write something up to the effect that, that, what are we calling it?
So if they, so if they put it on an existing pole, wouldn't people already have the expectation that it could fall on their house anyway if it's close enough?
Well, existing poles are in right of ways which have sufficient setbacks from harm, generally speaking, so...
That's my point.
It wouldn't fall on somebody's house if it's in a right of way, but I think what they're really concerned about is like the one they were gonna put back there by the retention pond, they were gonna have to put their own pole up, and they want, you know, that would be where there would be a fall zone issue.
So we're sufficient, we have, we have sufficient language there for that, correct?
Yeah, it's just not clear, it's just not defined, because once again, it's, I mean, we can add that, but we can basically...
If it's not clear, does it make sense to make it clear?
No, it's not not clear, it's just not...
We have the authority to regulate based off, like that, as in what 160D gives us, so it's, this is one of these where it's like, it's not necessary that we have to put it in there, but if we want to, I mean, we can, we can't, it just kind of gives us general parameters that...
I'm gonna, Chaplain, we need to box ourselves in there.
I don't want to box, but I think we might could add something in the, in accordance with the timeframes and requirements, maybe we could say, because you got public safety, you've got spacing, so we could do 935.5, but I don't want to miss out on anything else. We could say in the requirements to protect the town, the requirements, I don't want them to say it's the requirements for us to process, I don't say it's the requirements for us to protect, the requirements. Protect and regulate, protect and regulate.
Majority of the communities within Marvin have underground utilities, they really don't have many poles.
Okay, so...
Yeah, and that's where, like I said, that's where some of our, I mean, we have in our engineered designs, some parts of our subdivision ordinance states that no, it's, like, no utility structures or stuff like that can be placed within seventy feet of a sidewalk and so on, I mean, I don't know if that's, it could be a stretch we've got to fight, but like, it's there. I mean, that's one justification potentially to deny, and once again, it's to try to promote co-location is the main purpose of this ordinance, like, get the regulations in place, but the goal is, is when they come to me, as Chaplain said, is like, I can look and say, hey, how did you identify this parcel, or this property, or why here, or have you thought about co-locating off the power line, I mean, stuff like that. I mean, it gives me a chance to get in front of them and really have them express why here.
How about we just add the word regulatory requirements, in accordance with the timeframes and regulatory requirements of 160D 935, 935's the one, and these are regulatory requirements city may deny for cities codes, local code provisions concerning public safety, objective design standards, reasonable spacing, that's for that. So I think if we add the word regulatory in the subsection B4, it highlights, which I think your public thinks as well, and we're incorporating 935.
And in the spacing part, they're asking for a thousand, is there justification?
How did, how was that?
I mean, is that box us in?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, I would rather have a reasonable, and let us look and see what is reasonable, and also, I don't necessarily want to defend a thousand feet, because I don't know how far they can get, I don't know how far they can go this year, I don't know how far they can go next year.
That's what I, and that's why I said, I'd like to know what their effective range is and how they expect to space them.
So until we learn more about that, then let's just stick with what we have.
But yeah, we're reasonable, but we're, yeah, we're covered, it's...
And I think that, even moving forward to your point earlier, the technology is going to change, and it could change six months from now, and we wouldn't have the first one in here, and it could get, it could double the range on them, we just don't know, and as they...
Don't know, don't know.
Yeah, and as the technology progresses, they could put less and less and less, and if we put a finite parameter in there, we can box ourselves in down the road too, and then they could put more in than are needed under our guidelines.
All right.
So, okay.
Do you also, Chaplain, do you also want to read this 130, or 2, 3, 936, for the public, so that they understand a little bit of the coverage area, where we're coming from, from that standpoint?
It's the same, is what he's already read.
Okay. It does say forty feet in there, though.
Yes, I, I mentioned that.
They, I don't, they have not, the public has not heard.
Okay, the height level is...
In terms of regulatory use of public right of way, municipality cannot approve an application subject to...
It has to comply with 160D 936.
Which is?
Fifty feet in general, if there's an existing pole, the structure can go no higher than ten feet above it, and then for the residentially zoned areas where the existing utilities are underground, the structure can exceed forty feet.
Cannot, cannot.
Cannot exceed forty feet.
Yeah, I just wanted them to hear that, so they were aware.
Okay. But we're gonna encourage co-location, because that's in accordance with statutory intent and this ordinance.
All right. Any other questions, Bob?
No, I'm following all of you, and I really appreciate you citizens there for...
All right. Just one second here while we're...
Yeah, we'll still need to close the public hearing.
Yeah, I know, that's what I was about to do, so. That being said, no other public comments, I need a motion to clo, close the public hearing?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
So before we go on to this, can we add, can we ask to add the fee schedule to the consent agenda for...
I've already made an amendment.
The work session and change that fee schedule, I'm assuming everybody's gonna agree with that.
Absolutely.
Big, yes.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Andy, for paying attention.
That would be to increase it to the...
One hundred for the first five and fifty for each additional.
All right, so we have to make a...
One other thing, two, one other thing here, and all it is, is basically where, where it's highlighted in the yellow in there, where it says the technical standards, we just need to update, or I, basically, I don't know if it really matters for the motion, but just reference the actual official Village of Marvin Engineer Design, or whatever the official name of our engineer standards are.
That is on...
It's the highlighted parts where it references our engineer technical standards, I don't know if it matters changing it to the official name of our...
Just so they read it.
Well, it doesn't sound like we have the official name.
Yeah, it can't, it's, what it, or...
Standards and Spec Manual, I believe?
Engineering Standards. Standards Manual?
Yeah.
So included in the, the motion you would like to address?
That's why it's highlighted, basically.
Where are you talking about?
Right here.
Why is it not under Stat recommended, baby? Why is it not written out?
Because some of this was submitted to you guys before Chaplain, before I talked to Chaplain.
Oh, I got it here, okay, all right. You can just say Standards and Spec, I know, or the equivalent. I got it, all right.
They're obviously handing this over to you, Mayor, too.
Yep, great, ready? All right, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the amended zoning, no, what am I doing? Is it this one?
Amended ordinance.
No, this is not. This is a zoning text amendment, is that, is that the one you want me to...
It's an ordinance to adopt.
Yeah.
It's an ordinance to...
That's not right.
Well, it's just, I mean, it's still a zoning, but we're adopting it through ordinance, basically, so...
Are you in your, are you in...
It's just to adopt.
Yeah, but it doesn't say that, okay. So I'm gonna make a motion to adopt an ordinance to adopt regulations for small cell, for small wireless facilities in the Village of Marvin, North Carolina, as an amendment to title XB, because I don't know what that is, land use, these land usage of the Village of Marvin Code of Ordinances, I'm reading this on the ordinance, that's not what you want me to read?
They had a recommended motion in the system.
Rec, where?
Let me see, let me see.
Okay, can you, can...
Is it a zoning text amendment?
It's, so, all it is, is a motion to adopt the ordinance, what is it, 02...
You don't, it don't give the number, the number's not final.
Basically, yeah, the ordinance approving the proposed zoning text amendment.
To add regulatory language for small cell wireless facilities and find that the proposed zoning text amendment is consistent with the Village of Marvin 2020 Land Use Plan and other officially adopted village plans, and is reasonable and in the public interest.
With, with the following two changes?
Hold on, I mean, I see it, but that is, I have it right here, but that is not, I didn't think this was a text amendment. I thought this was a new ordinance.
It's an ordinance to adopt the text amendment, because you have to adopt a text amendment by ordinance.
That's not what it says there, that is different from there, okay, all right, I got it.
Want to read it?
Not really, but I will. All right, I'd like to make a motion, I guess, to adopt ordinance, I'm just gonna read this, it doesn't even make sense, to adopt ordinance approving the proposed zoning text amendment to add regulatory language for small cell wireless facilities and find that the proposed zoning text amendment is consistent with the Village of Marvin 2020 Land Use Plan and other officially adopted village plans, and is reasonable and is in the public interest with the change under 151.068 under B number four, that will say timeframes and add the word regulatory before requirements. And also with, in accordance with the Village of Marvin Technical Standards Manual.
Good job.
Is that right? She needs a drink.
I mean, you guys could have made that slightly easier. That was very...
Further discussion.
Here, pass that back down to Chaplain.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thanks, Ken. Jesus, get her drinks.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna request that there's a little more, uh...
Yeah, it was, it's a little confusing, but...
A little one.
That's okay. We got it. All right, we're moving on, I take it, right?
Village Hall. Village Hall.
Village Hall, okay, next up, Village Hall.
Christine?
We have...
Sure. Please do. Everything's going. Great, all the furniture I've been in today. So the flooring is supposed to start this week.
Sinks are going in today, sinks, I took a picture of them.
I mean, you fixed yours.
In the bathroom.
Send me photos.
We have cabinets?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep, I sent some pictures to Austin, we have cabinets in the kitchen and in the courtroom.
Oh, I didn't see those, that must have gone in later.
They, no, they were in last week's, Friday, Thursday, I think, they were until like eight PM to get them in, or something like that, Tyler said.
So they're, they're doing all the flooring except for the council chambers, which is where we're putting the fans. Still working on installing the generator. Landscaping should be about done, minus a couple of trees. And to date, we are still waiting on the response back on the ramp issue, so we're still waiting on that. In terms of contingency, we've got a balance right now of sixty-five thousand, but we have two outstanding CEOs that have not been approved, which equate to roughly fifteen thousand right now.
So are we gonna, are we gonna have anything left over when we're done at this point, you think?
Probably not. We still have to get blinds, which is not accounted for.
Because there are, I just, I know there are gonna be some issues that are gonna be, have to be corrected after the fact, just because of cost, I think, so that's why I was wondering, we may have to do some extra things once things are done.
We still, we still have not accounted for the low voltage lighting, some miscellaneous We did have a interior design meeting today to discuss some entranceway kind of aesthetics. We'll get some more information back to y'all at a later date on that, once we get some numbers and some general looks, we're putting together something that I think will be pleasing to the council and relatively low cost. Aside from that, we have obtained the furniture for the lobby areas, so much cheaper price than what we would have got from a commercial vendor, we actually went to Home Goods and just picked up some nice little things that aren't commercial grade, but they're not gonna be used as commercial grade, so we don't see any reason to believe that we need a commercial. AVs going in, and then the... Security? Security, as planned, so.
So it's starting?
We're actually meeting tomorrow to discuss an update on that. And so furniture has been pushed to when? Three weeks to end of February.
And the fans?
Should have an answer back this week on that.
So they're, they're ordered?
No. They're not ordered, we're still waiting to get an approval back from the engineer. I'm sure it's fine, but we just have to go through the process.
We want those installed before, they should hold off on the flooring and anything.
They're not, they're not gonna put the flooring up there until then.
Do we know what those fans weigh?
I don't know off the top of my head, it's in my email, but I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, because when we, when we spoke with John Urban, the number of seventy pounds was brought up, that that should...
He was fine, John was fine with it, he just sent it to his engineer to go over the HVAC and all that stuff, so it's...
He was fine, John was fine with it, but he just sent it to his engineer to go over the H V A C and all that stuff, so it's. The weight is fine. Is there any specific questions anyone has?
We're gonna hold off on the downspout and connecting those later, or just basically, I I chatted with them separately saying, let's see how some bad rains that happen and what happens and see if we have to do anything rather. It should have been done when they had everything dug up, but it's not. Now it comes back on us.
I said that to Christina, I said, we'll go back after the fact and do it, and it's gonna be cheaper anyway than getting a a change order at this point, so. Yeah, there's gonna be, like I said, there's gonna be a couple of things that we're gonna have to to change and update after this is all done to make it a finished product, so that's why I was just trying to figure out where we're going financially with it.
And the only thing I can add on from the meeting today, we talked about kind of dressing up both the lobbies of the street side and also the parking side interior. What we did not consider, what? Oh, what we did not consider, we were just gonna do the back walls for now, which I did the measurements for that, but how you wrap it around, as we can talk about that later as far as installation, um, how you wrap it around, you put a border and make it nice and clean, but do we wanna go down the hallways that where the bathrooms are and kinda, because that adds another three hundred and twenty square feet onto.
Okay, you did measure it.
I did measure it, so, but, so we're looking at two hundred in the front square feet, three hundred in the back, but I also, I talked to Tyler, he believes there are a lot more reasonable products out there from Lowe's and stuff like that, and he said to nail gun it in.
We got all that.
Yeah, and I do too, but I'm I'm just saying, it's, it's, that's without labor. What we were proposed today was 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 a pretty big number, so I think, although we saw some great samples of what we may wanna do.
We've got an idea of what we wanted to do, so we'll look, we'll shop it.
We have to keep shopping it, so. But it is coming along well, it's just we don't have any idea when we're moving in, correct?
I think the end of this month.
I'll put an over and under on that one. For sure. All right, thank you, Christina. Moving on to unfinished business. Consideration of revised Newtown Road, Marvin Road Roundabout Agreement with N C D O T and update on R A B progress.
Yeah, we really do need to have names on here.
They should be in there under description. Actually, well, they should be. They're under cover sheet.
Did it grow so much?
Well, they're not, so.
I'm not sure if the functionality of that, we might not be able to put them in there that way, just limitations of the software.
What's that?
Sponsors.
Sponsors?
It's what they, it's what they're called in the system, it's the person who's speaking on the item. I don't know if I can actually put those in the system that way.
Okay, Christina, this is yours.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Which one, are we on unfinished one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um.
Actually, Brett on the phone right now with N C D O T to give us a quick update on the roundabout. Presented in front of you is the revised agreement from N C D O T, as we've been discussing over the last couple of months. Basically, it's a net deduction. I did give you a quick summary, well, somehow the somehow the memo is not attached. It's just the agreement.
It's because we have the old one.
Oh, okay, so then, okay, there you go. The summary's there, you can see the very last table and it goes over what the net decrease was, which I think off the top of my head was three or four thousand bucks. It's on page two, actually, yeah, right there. So Brett's here, he can go over the details if you want to, they're asking us to sign the revised agreement. The project cost has gone up, nine million dollars since the project was first agreed to back in twenty eighteen, I believe. There's been no true net increase in costs for the village since then. And the presentation in front of you tonight, or the agreement in front of you tonight should be a little less in construction costs, four thousand dollars less. So I'll turn it over to to Brett if he's got any remarks. I told him to keep it high level unless y'all had specific questions, so.
So, okay, I think that might have been my cue.
Yep, you're on.
Okay, good, hopefully everyone can hear me all right. I've had a little bit of trouble, audio on my end, so hopefully I'm coming through clearly. Thanks, everyone, council members and mayor for having me back. Again, I'm Brett Knife, I'm with N C D O T Division Ten Engineer. Uh, we also, we're gonna have Sean Emerson, our project team lead here, but he had a last minute family issue come up, so I'm going it alone, but I think it's gonna be okay, because as Christina said, we're here just to provide a quick update on the progress. I can't say that we have been moving in the right direction. We're still on track for the schedule that we discussed last time we were there with you guys. You know, we have continued with coordination with all these property owners, and the right away acquisition still is ongoing. We're getting closer to closing some of those loops, though. We believe that we're gonna be done with our right away phase sometime late spring, and then we'll be moving on to the utility relocation phase of the project. And that should, those two phases will actually probably overlap, but that is kind of by design and and it's a way that we can compress the schedule just a little bit, and well, we should be moving into construction in November of this year. And what we expect to start first is the wet utilities, and that's just, you know, watering and sewer line work, and then while that's going on, again, we're probably gonna expect some overlap with the utility, the aerial utilities and other aerial utilities, again, to compress that schedule and timeframe. We are working to to secure the last couple of parcels, completing our discussions with the the southern leg of the roundabout. If y'all remember, there was a little bit of turbulence there related to go no go. Uh, we are in the go mode now on that that southern leg and are working to to sort of finalize that deal out with the current property owner, Mr. Odell, or the anticipating the future property owner, the development team. So just wanted to keep it really high level, and again, apologize for Sean not making it with us tonight, but just a last minute issue popped up, but I'll be glad to help answer any questions if you may have, if I can.
Um, just out of curiosity on this, and maybe you know this or not, given that you've probably experienced these kinds of things. Once they do go under construction, when you meant go in construction, is how big of a disruption of service such as water is there, or will there be projected to be any disruption?
So it, yeah, it's possible that you have a brief interruption in water service. It depends if, you know, if the water system is spent in two directions, for example, that could change whether or not you have an interruption as the lines have, but that is always kept to a very minimum amount of time, and it's also something that the impact of property ownership, when you notice, you know, we're not just gonna support that at some point if it doesn't.
So I guess the the golden question is, how how do we prevent, like, if we project another roundabout, and how do we lock in pricing? Because we've been ready to do this for so long, and I think the incre- how much was the increase, five hundred thousand?
Yeah, but not to us.
In construction, yeah, but the F G span for that.
Right, okay, so the overruns are directly related to what, then?
Whatever they.
Inflation, I don't, I don't know.
Which goes back to timing and stuff like that, so.
Brett, do you know what they're attributable to, the increases?
I'm having a really hard time of hearing you guys.
Do you know what the construction increase is attributable to?
I guess it has to be material.
Yeah, I mean, I I I think the mayor's touching on it, I mean, part of the issue is this ban of time between early estimates and current estimate. But it is, construction costs are going up in every aspect of this industry, in vertical construction, highway construction, fuel price increases are just a fact of life that we're having to tend with right now.
Controlling.
You know, I'm truthful, I've I've seen fluctuations in the market over my career where pricing has actually, you know, increased depending upon how many projects you found on the street, contractor availability and those sort of factors, so you know, we could get lucky and this gets written down, but I could not make that commitment.
But but on the overrun part, where we're on the hook for fifty percent, specifically, what would that be if we, you're in the middle of construction and realize there's something that needs to be moved, or, you know, they have to go in there blast and because there was rocks down in there, whatever, I don't know what 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 could possibly, but that's my question, I guess. What what could we foresee us potentially be? What items would be on a fifty fifty split?
Everything.
Right away?
And I'm getting a lot of feedback this time, but the, you know, the agreement would be structured that the town or village would be responsible for twenty percent of the overruns of project cost. So that would not be isolated in any one particular line item, but what I can say is that one thing that we're pretty successful in is, once we've got our engineer's estimate, we've got successful bids within a reasonable proximity of that engineer's estimate, we can award it. Well, then we've got line item prices, right, and so if the contractor experiences a yearly price increases, then if there is some identification there, in terms of subsurface concerners such as rock, you know, this is, none of this work is necessarily gonna be very, very deep. Could we encounter some rock? Yes, we can. But there's various ways that we have protection for that in our contract documents as well. The first provision that I can think of that we're applying here would be the fact that in all of our contracts, our contractors are responsible for subsurface escalation, and we do not guarantee that there will not be some impediment like rock in the way. You know, if this were a bridge project, for example, you know, some of the bridge foundations, which you could imagine could quite be, there's provisions for those types of things that we could, you could pay the contractor for excavation in rock versus excavation in soil if it were, you know, a bridge pile, but we're only talking about relatively shallow utility work going underground.
Any questions from council?
I just have one comment I wanna make, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Um, Brett, could you tell him or tell us how much contingency you have built in, if you guys already account for any of that in any of your phases?
So I don't have the, I don't have the estimate documents in front of me, but typically, you know, we would factor in at least a ten to twenty, or fifteen, ten to fifteen percent contingency. And, you know, as we get pretty close, we generally, our estimates get fairly good. I will say that, you know, when the material escalations came along fairly, really quickly, you know, you could see a pattern where our estimates were not aligned with actual bids, but now that we're tracking with those increases, we feel pretty confident about it. So we do have contingencies in the estimate and that's what we've announced.
Okay.
All right, that said, any other questions from council?
Just, so you're saying, if we get started in November, what what do you think completion date might be?
So early in the in the construction season, we're thinking that we'd be open to traffic by June, you know.
I said May.
There would be. There could be some work that we might need to finish jobs, so just tidying up or finishing the seating operations like that, so. Yes, yes.
Any questions, Bob? Bob has left the building.
No.
He's checked out.
All right.
No, I don't. Do we need, when I'm looking at number five of unfinished business, do we, do we need any input there?
We're, we're on number one.
I'm so lost.
I'm sorry, broke up, what website?
We're on number one of unfinished business.
No, I know that. I I, hang on.
No, we don't.
I just said it.
No, Bob, we don't, sorry.
Something.
That's on the totally separate.
That's all I need.
Okay. All right, so I'm gonna make a, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the N C D O T agreement revisions for the Marvin Road, Newtown Road Roundabout.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Brett.
I haven't had a chance to take it off yet.
That's it.
All right, thank you again.
All right. Good night. Um, next up, we have discussed and considered waiving the three quote requirement and entering into contract with Blue Ridge Trail Works for the construction of trail connections at Marvin Eaton Park and allow manager to execute contract.
You've only got two of them in this part of the state that do, does trail work.
This is Derek's item.
Derek. Derek was there. He's right there.
Yeah.
I think he's waiting for you.
Okay, you're, you're, you're up, go ahead.
I mean, this is an item that was budgeted in the capital improvement projects from last year.
Yep.
Just requesting your approval of the contract with Blue Ridge Trail Works for fifteen thousand dollars.
Basically, the money's there, per your purchasing policy, you require three bids on this amount. This is the vendor that we've been using for all of our trails, and for continuity's sake, he just wants to stay with the same vendor.
So, and that's fine, but this is not necessarily going forward, that we're not gonna be taking three bids, or it's just for this particular work, is that what you're asking?
It's very difficult for Derek to get three pe- the same three people to keep coming out to give him quotes, because we keep giving it to the same people. And because they have the same product, the best pricing.
Well, here's, here's what I would suggest, I'm fine with that and staying with the same, so we get the same quality, that sort of thing, but I would, I would suggest that if if that's gonna continue, that we have a maybe a lineal footage price already set, and if that starts to increase, just they need to notify us. And if it gets significant enough, then that's when I think we gotta bring in other bids.
Well, I think we had talked about at some point trying to get them to come in and basically look at everything that we wanna do and have like a, like a concrete.
All inclusive timing.
Yes.
Yeah, but the problem with that is, is, you know, prices change, like on roads and stuff like that, so you can have an idea of what it is, but what they would usually do, correct me if I'm wrong, you may know this, is do a lineal foot, and what is it gonna cost to do a lineal foot? What what is our cost to do that, and then we just don't.
So we've discussed the possibility, or not the possibility, but the 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 change in moving into the next fiscal year, that at the beginning of the year, we would know more better about how much lineal foot we would need, whereas before, we weren't doing trails and greenways in any set pattern, we would just do them here and there as we, as we came about. So now we've approved a C I P that actually dictates what it is we're gonna do in any given year, so at the beginning of the year, we know what lineal foot we're gonna need. We did that the first time this past year, and then we got into this mix and we discovered that we did, we we need to do the lineal foot bidding process at the beginning of the fiscal year. So that's kind of where we're at now, is we'll do that process when fiscal year twenty-three starts, we're just in the, in the interim right now and trying to to make ends meet between now and.
Some re-bid of a contract for linear footage every year moving forward and just continuing to keep using.
Whoever the lowest responsive bidder is at that time.
Yes, yeah, assuming they stay within that price range.
Yeah, but then.
They would have to if they have a contract.
But they're gonna have to stick with this specific trail and bid it apples to apples. Because nobody else so far, correct me if I'm wrong, but nobody else so far has done it the same way as Blue Ridge either. They've got bids. That he's gotten his bids from.
I believe that's an accurate statement, but that's definitely a Derek question.
Yeah. Derek?
Yeah, he's stuck.
He's asleep. I saw his head down.
Look, he's asleep now.
He's sleeping.
He definitely has a very specific method that he does. You know, we've, we've two vendors in the last couple of years. You know, Blue Ridge Trail Works is by far cheapest per lineal foot and gives, in my opinion, the best product. We get the best feedback from it.
And say if they give you a bid on something, how good, how, say they give you a bid on a project, how long is that bid good for typically?
It would be like a contract for the year.
I know, but.
Typically 30 days, but.
Oh, that's it.
He'll work for us.
Well, I was getting to your point. It's like you have a mindset and we just capture as much as we can on what gets done, knowing it's going to be at that price essentially. If they could give us, if we could get quotes from three different companies and say, okay, I'm going to give you a quote for 2022. Anything you get done in that year, that fiscal year, it's going to be X amount per lineal foot. So that helps us with a bunch of things.
Well, the, the reality of it is though, at the beginning of the fiscal year, we're going to know exactly what trails we're doing. The money's going to be there. It's going to be appropriated. So there's really no reason that we can't go ahead and.
Do that.
Bid the whole year's work of construction.
Yeah. There's no reason to piecemeal it here and there.
Should be doing it.
Unless it's workflow issue with him, which I highly doubt.
Okay. I'm, I'm fine with this. If anyone else has any questions, speak up.
I'm good with the current motion.
Oh, so then you're going to read the motion then?
Yeah, you can.
I can.
All right. I'm going to make a motion to waive the three quote requirement to approve the contract with Blue Ridge Trail Works and allow the manager to execute the contract.
Further discussion. Andy, you have to step up.
I know, you have to be quicker.
All's in favor.
Top top.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Aye.
Uh, discussion of, next up, discussion of 2022 Marvin Day celebration.
Nope.
Did I? Yep.
Oh, sorry. Discuss, discuss and consider waiving the three quote requirement and entering into contract with broom brush control for Marvin Eve parking and drainage improvements.
It's boom.
It's boom.
Oh, it said broom.
Yeah.
Um, improvements and allow the manager to execute contract.
Oh, Lord.
What is this?
This is something that I discussed with you guys a little bit previously. We actually changed a CIP item to help fund this project. This is what I believe to be a very competitive quote. Obviously, any vendor that goes out there has been, have their opinions on what to do. Austin, can you mute the mic? Thanks, Hunter. Sorry. You know, every vendor's going to have their own way of looking at what needs to be done or the way that they would fix it. But this is a local vendor. This is someone who's been to the park, who knows it well. I discussed it with Councilman Wortman briefly when the bid first came in. He felt like the, the labor price was very reasonable. Materials have gone up just a little bit from the initial exploration into this project. But this is something that's long overdue. Repeated potholes in the driveway. There's no grade to it, so they just continue to come back time after time. Culverts are filled with silt from runoff from the various parking lots. No rip rap, you know, in the ditches. They need to be cleaned out in the sewers, et cetera, et cetera. As, as shown in the various pictures on the packet item. So it's up for discussion.
Except sewers.
And Hunter, you'll need to unmute the mic so I can hear their comments.
Are you sure you want to?
Just formality.
So Andy, you have, you've talked to him about this or?
I did. It's been a while, so I can't recall specifics, but when I looked at it, what he had proposed, I thought it was reasonable.
What's the amount on this?
Sixty-one, sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven hundred dollars?
Sixty-seven eighty.
Six thousand, seven hundred.
I'm fine with that.
I had two thirds of its material cost.
Right.
Can't get around that. I think the, you know, the work, the labor is reasonable for a lot of work that's getting done.
Hey, um.
Derek.
Derek, are you going to stick around after this?
He's got Marvin Day.
Oh, you got Marvin Day? Okay. The only reason I'm, I'm asking about this because it has something to do with the open topics that you and I and Andy have discussed about mitigating, because now is the time to do it. I think he said you had some people.
Oh, my God.
No, for the rounds of town hall.
Okay.
All that brush, the, the, the brush hog we talked about doing. We, we need to kind of, just so you know, and I'm not going to get into it too much, but we need to set some dates and times to do that. I looked into it and I can get some prices and all that to you for, for doing that. But we, we originally quoted that, but I think Andy had mentioned that you were offering some of your guys this help on certain days to do. But if we're going to do that, it's got to be in the next month. And I, the reason I say that is because foil is just going to start coming in. It's going to be more difficult to do it if we don't jump on it within the next month.
Yeah.
So just put that, I didn't know if you were leaving after this. I wanted to make sure you knew that we need to get up with you and your group.
Talking about it. He's been working on getting some things together.
Right. Okay. So we, we need a motion for this?
Yes.
Yes.
Somebody want to make it?
Go ahead, Andy.
I'll make a motion to waive the three quote requirement to approve the contract with broom brush control and allow the manager to execute the contract.
Further discussion. All's in favor.
Aye.
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 I mean, you're slow on the uptake.
I am.
Just did not.
I was trying to get, work my computer to get back to, sorry.
Okay, moving on. We're, we're going to take a quick three minute bio break.
So moved.
Need a motion to.
So moved.
Oh, what?
Bio break.
We're going to the restroom. We're taking a body break.
Bio, we call it bio.
Five minute break?
Yeah, five minute break.
Motion for a five minute break.
Yeah, there's a motion on the table, five minute break. All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Kim said she didn't care. She's out.
Motion passes, so you got five minutes. I gave her a shout. Leading the meeting. Moving on to the next, Bob, are you back?
I'm back.
All right. Moving on to the next unfinished and last unfinished business item, discussion 2022 Marvin Day celebration, Saturday, May 21st, 2022. Who has this?
We wouldn't know if he doesn't have it on there.
There's got to be a way to put that out.
Lord have mercy.
All you have to do is right at the end of this, like when you put in new business, I'm just a suggestion. When you put in new business, discussion, consideration, TP application, put a slash and put the name is what we're saying.
I'll figure out a way to, I can put it in, I'll try to put it in the description box. That'll, that'll probably take care of it.
Yeah, that's, that's all we're asking because that's in the description box, right?
They want it in the title. We'll, we'll take that.
I'll take, I'll take care of it.
It's, it's got to be able to.
I'll take care of it.
It makes it easier than.
Lord have mercy.
Yeah, we agree.
So Derek.
Derek.
What do you got for updates?
We're ready.
You have the mic.
Not a, not a ton of updates, just that the last two meetings have gone really well. A lot of good progress out of those meetings. Christina and Jamie and I met with Jill yesterday and got her, or got her up to speed pretty much with everything going on, and she's ready to kind of jump in headfirst and help out. You guys went over the flyer earlier, said that was a big component. She'll start getting that out as well as the press release here, probably by the end of the week. I would say one of the biggest things to note is that the Health Fair kickoff event has massively transformed in the last couple of weeks. So Jamie has secured the Big Red Bus, Community Bus for the Blood Drive. I've got a company that can do the fun run, high energy music, kids, fun, family portion of it. And then I've got a call tomorrow with a company who has verbally said that they can do the 5K portion of the event.
Awesome. And we're going to piecemeal it. We're not doing the big.
We can hear us.
Oh, we're going to.
Say awesome.
That's great. Awesome. That's what I said that you missed. But, so we're going to, you and I talked about this a little bit. We're not getting the whole bang kaboodle thing. We're just piecemealing it where it's a reasonable price, correct?
I'm still going to discuss that with her tomorrow and see, you know, what, what's the best option there? What makes the most sense?
Because what brings people out in races and runs is typically the chip in the.
We're muted.
What brings people out in races, just so you know, when you're, you're talking to them, is that people like to know what their times are. So having the chip in the, in, it's usually in their, when they sign up their bib. Also categories, maybe some trophies, Marvin Day winner of 50 and older or whatever it is. Those things are the kind of stuff that'll bring people out and you'll get a lot of participation. I did talk to some charities that do that. They kind of led back to the same person you were dealing with. So it's not that they put it on separately, but there's all these different levels. And because we're so new, we don't really know how much we're going to kind of bring in, so as far as people. But the more you offer for people, I would think, is going to be better or more successful for the run itself, if that makes sense. But without going crazy.
I don't have the tone of experience from putting on a 5K, but I would say, you know, one of the biggest things is that you guys need to decide is what the registration fee would be. Yeah, that's going to determine, you know, how much money we recoup. You know, and then we'll have to make a cap on how many people we can have. I thought about $22 as a first year. It's, you know, 2022, that's a little low for the going rate. But it might be, you know, real attractive and help us fill out the event. So it's just something to keep in mind that we're going to be making a decision on probably at the, at the work day.
Just telling you. Go.
Go. And I would encourage you to reach, when you talk to your individuals at that race company to find out what is, because this is new and it all, it all depends about our reach. Our reach in Marvin through our website, plus what we have with some of the other people that have offered to, you know, kind of promote this, this, this day, if you will, so.
Yeah, my thought is priority registration goes to our residents and people on our email list. And then the race company can open it up to their list and put it on their website. And I don't have any doubt that they're going to fill it up once it hits their website.
So are we on?
Yeah.
So Derek, you're going to send out a revised to do list of everyone that has action steps remaining, that hasn't been completed or has upcoming due dates? When can people expect to receive those emails or that email?
Um, 48 hours from tonight's meeting.
So we just asked, we just asked that you all that have duties that get, you get an email to make sure you get them done within the timeline that we've identified. It's really important to get that stuff done because there's subsequent events that have to take place after that fact. So if you have anything assigned to you that Derek gives you an email, just make sure you please get it done.
And also make sure that everybody has on their calendar that we have a joint meeting with Park Street and Greenway on Tuesday, February 22nd at 9:00 AM.
June 22?
June 22nd, 9:00 AM with Park Street and Greenway.
Did they send out that request?
Yeah, it has been sent out. You signed.
I am.
9:00 AM.
It's already on the calendar.
Okay.
Just making sure everybody knows.
Did you have something? So I'll give you a quick update. Bob, this is probably more for you, but I did talk, I went, I have, was on the board meeting for the band and they are all, all thumbs up and we are go with the board to partner with them. So we're basically going to be using their, all their knowledge and all the stuff. And, and this guy needs help. He did it by himself. He had two months to prepare. We have a little over three months for this. So I think with you and John and I, I offered that initially. Anyone else that wants to join in on figuring out what we can do to organize this, everything from, I mean, I'm sure they could create, he can use the old flyer that he used before and, and we can change it around to have Marvin Day in it and along with the Marvin Ridge Band, but they're very excited. I had all the band members, including Mr. James, who's the band director. They're very thankful too. So they thanked us for including them in on this. I just think it's a win-win-win for all. So I will reach out to you separately on that. And then last Friday, I, I met with New York Life, who really wants to be involved with our community. I, I've sort of met him haphazardly. It is that we were both traveling and realized, you know, I, I personally, full disclosure, use New York Life, have had it through my brother for years. He's an individual that's the main regional manager in this area. He should be back to me on what level sponsor he's going to be. I have no idea what that'll be, but I'm sure based on what they want to do, they want to stay involved. They were very excited, but I think Derek, that somehow his wife connected with you, that that's how she's doing the events. And that's all volunteer, by the way, and I think we charged her if I'm not mistaken, but it's, she does that for senior citizens. Citizens is my understanding for free. It's some sort of activity. They just needed a venue, so they use Eford Park. So I think they come from Sun City. He was explaining that to me, but bottom line is, it's, it's kind of good. These, these guys, they, they've got the mentality that they want to give back to the community and this is something I think they would love to be a big part. Again, I, I hope they're at a decent level of sponsorship. I, I don't see anything less than at least a silver, but it could be more than that. But, but thank you for having them at the Christmas tree lighting event. And that's all I had on my updates.
Can I go back to the car, the car show real quick?
Yes.
We had originally thought time 10 to 2, correct? Is there any way that we can move that to 11 to 3, just to have it closer to the equine event? That's going to be at the Cedar Hill thing, plus having it kind of with the food trucks and just kind of closer to.
I, I, I don't know that because I, I've been to a few car shows. Some are just real finite, like the Waxall one. And it's real early. It's like seven to, to nine, so people can go to mass after that in church that day. Most of the ones we attend to, we're free to do whatever we want. People, I guess, are free to pick up. But usually it's all based around, you know, when awards are given out and stuff like that, so.
Well, so can we talk to the guy that's arranging it and ask him, say, 10 to 2, can we do it 11 to 3?
It's very likely.
Okay. Like, did you all ask?
Oh, no, I, I'll ask. There's no question. I'm just saying it's very likely that we, it's likely that it could happen 11 to 3. I just have not been to a car show at 11 to 3. It's usually 10 to 2.
Okay, well, can we ask him if we can do it 11 to 3?
Certainly can ask.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
I don't know how.
I knew what he meant, but I wanted to clarify.
Anybody else on Marvin Day?
You know who else?
Now I have updated.
Well, I was just going to say.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I was going to say, Joe, I will forward you an email from, from Kevin Fielden, from the Ferrari Club. Just read it and, and, and everything that you just said, just read it, you know, I'll forward to you, okay?
Okay.
On the other hand, everybody that I contacted, the biggest player we've got, and I'll refer this kind of a little bit to Christina, holds really wants to be heavily involved. I was telling, and I think I mentioned this to you, they're doing a big, great opening right at the St. Lloyd of Marvin Day. I did not realize this, as I had told the mayor, but the, of the 1,200 holes across the United States, this holds an opt-in. but the, of the 1,200 holes across the United States, this holds an opt-in, so they are going to be doing a total remake over, I mean, it's our department, they often volunteer, they also want to make a community donation of some sort, or amount, so it's kind of like, you know, I'll need your assistance with this, because it's kind of a little off my head, that they want to be a little, they, they want to be very involved, I sent them the sponsorship, they, they didn't commit to it, you know, to anything per se yet, because they just not know what we need from them, and they'll be happy, provided.
I, I can have a separate meeting with you about that, I'll email you or call you sometime this week, and we can go over what's needed from us.
Okay.
Anyone else comments on where they're at with? And do we have a date that you want actual cash in hand?
As soon as possible.
Well, what's our deadline? I mean, we're going to continue taking money, but.
Until we print the shirt.
So based, so based on this budget, we're looking at around 20 grand?
We'll always take the money.
And where are we at total, right now? As far as verbal commitments?
We're at about 19.
Okay, so just keep pushing, I mean, it's, because that's all going to matter, where are we at, did we learn any more on fireworks?
Yeah, we just got a secure, I mean, I talked to him, he said, we're ready to go, the date's fine, whatever, we just have to, we can't do it on.
Find a location.
Right, so that's why I sent the two of you the information on the person over there.
I mean, let's just put it out, maybe, is there, I mean, we can say, if anyone knows, anyone that could allow their property to be.
What was Hunter's?
No, 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 I'm saying, I'm saying anybody in that, because I assume that we'll be on the home side, the, the people in the audience, so it's going to be somewhere in.
It's going to be directly in front, you can't miss, I mean.
No, 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 I'm saying is, it's going to have to be east of the stadium.
Yeah.
So, yes, so it's some property east of the stadium that's willing to donate their land to shoot off fireworks.
Well, I've gone by there twice to see if his gate was open, and his gate was not open.
Okay.
Because I was just going to go ahead and pull up in there and say, hey, I'm just trying to get, but it, it, it might, it might do us good if we could just get a letter, simple letter to him saying, like we discussed, Hunter, just to say, you know, Marvin Day celebration, part of this is we're entertaining bringing the fireworks in, your location of, of the field across there would be, would be a site that we would love to consider, if you're open to that, please contact and you can put my name on there, and as soon as possible.
Do we know who owns the property with the driveway to nowhere? You know what I'm talking about.
Right behind the school?
Yeah.
That property is for sale for a while.
I mean, there's like two giant brick columns with the driveway and.
Yeah, but this is before that.
Yeah.
There's two, there's two fields, and it would be perfect, because nobody has to move, concert's done, you look up, I mean, you don't have to turn like this, you don't have to do anything, you just.
I'm just thinking of that guy, don't get back to us when we.
I know, well, let's see if we can, I'm going to continue to drive by there, but let's hit him with a letter as well, if that's possible.
Yeah.
And put my name as a contact, because once we do that, then the, then the, if he says yes, this is an easy thing.
Right.
I call him, now, the, the price on that was 70, he said 75, I thought, you know, I said, can we do something for 5, he goes, listen, at the end of the day, it's going to be, you know, when you factor in the insurance and the dog, blah, 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 he said, it's going to be around the 75 number.
Um, are we muted?
No.
Derek, what is the drop dead date on that, what's the due date on those fireworks? I'm just curious, I can't pull up the file. I think it was the 14th or 15th.
Oh, yeah, because we got to do it.
Because we've got to get, um.
Right.
The TUP, so we just need to make sure we get it, you know, we get it done as fast as we can, otherwise.
I got you.
Well, can we go ahead and do one?
No, no, you don't need the TUP, because it's not village property.
Put the county though.
Oh, the county, okay, I didn't, then that's what we talked about, I don't know if they're county.
Firethorn, didn't we, when they were doing fireworks?
Yeah, that's, that's in the village, can we go ahead and just do one, and then if we don't need it, then no harm about?
We probably can, I'm sure there's an application fee, so just, I don't know how much we know, I haven't looked into it.
I'll look into it.
I just wanted to know that we have $6,000 that we've received.
That's it?
Yeah, that's it.
Did you, did you get the check from DHL?
No.
She sent me the email the day she put it in the mail.
Okay.
Did you count the money that you gave me today? Jeez.
Mike, go back to me, remind me.
I got to check this code.
Yeah, but you've been dating.
Just send me a note.
Commission out of it, just a reminder.
Is there all? The only other issue, Derek, in, in this for council is, a lot of places were very curious about tents, and where they could locate them, and I, I thought, it's hard to say where you're going to get more people, but if you have 200 cars, I know how many car, people we got just from people walking in to see the car show, I don't know if there's that same draw at the park, if you have just a Raptor show and stuff like that, so it's, it's going to be different, but.
Whoa, 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 just a Raptor show?
No, 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 I'm saying, it's, I'm, I'm not sure that that's a bigger, a bigger pool, I, I don't know, because I haven't been to the Raptor show, but I have been to the car show.
It's going to be, it's going to be the petting zoo that brings them in, so.
And that's fine, I, I don't care what brings them in, but I think, I think we should have the flexibility to tell the, the sponsor, look, if you want to set up at the high school for the car show, you can do that, or you can choose to go to the park, if we have space there, does that make sense?
Can I say one more thing about sponsorships, just so everybody knows, right now, we've added on our website where you can make a payment, so if you have somebody who wants to sponsor, they can click right on our website and make a payment.
Does it pay? Haven't paid yet?
Not that I've seen it come through, but I'll pull it again.
Okay.
Where, where do they go, is there a specific place that they go?
I can send a link directly to everybody, so you have it to pass along, so if you have a, a friend who wants to donate some money, they can click right there and pay, so I'll send out the link to everyone.
I'll hit some of my neighbors up, do your, do your civic duty pony up, pay a little more, they pay so little taxes here.
He's probably, no.
They do.
It is. Next door neighbor, Savannah.
All right, let's get, well, we've got a lot of stuff today.
All right, moving on, are we done there? All right, thanks, on the new business, H1, discussing considerations, TUP application 22-12810 for temporary sales and construction trailers for the Broadmoor subdivision.
Wait, did you say so moved?
Is there any questions or concerns, you guys get a chance to revisit that?
Yeah, just to clarify, which I had this conversation with Chaplain, is that basically this TUP in our ordinance states that it can be approved by the zoning administrator, but then randomly it says another sentence later that it has to be approved, and then has to be approved by the village council, so this is just a really a step, I mean, it's just, it's on here, it's compliant, meets our standards.
Okay.
So moved.
So the motion's on table, further discussion, all's in favor?
Aye.
All's in favor? Motion passes.
Aye.
All right, next up is discuss and consider approval of TUP application 22-12819 for construction trailer for the development of 711 and Marvin Gardens.
So moved.
Any comments?
It's just sitting down.
Same?
Yep.
Okay, we're in the same thing, further discussion, all's in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, next up, we have discuss and consider adoption resolution except maintenance of the Barcroft subdivision roads.
Christina, oh, no, it's Hunter.
Yeah, so a few things here is, the developers of Barcroft have submitted their road petition to the village, basically the, the final layer's been put in, the, our engineer, Mike, has went out there and inspected it, per his comments on his letters, basically everything's compliant outside of a few manholes need to be lifted to, to meet our standards, that has been submitted back to the developer, Mike also got to me, actually in the middle of this meeting, that, you know, the, the developer has submitted their, their petition packet that has the, like, like all the requirements, there were a few things with the encroachment agreements that I have to get back with the developer on, so for the most part, this either, either can be, I guess, tabled, or I don't know if that needs to be a motion to be made.
It could be even subject to, what are the outstanding items, just the.
The proper encroachment agreements.
You could approve it subject to.
This final engineer review and certification.
Yep.
I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't want to do that, I, I, I want all of this stuff done before we're doing it, because otherwise it's going to drag on.
They have to revisit it anyways, we might as well just revisit this one hole, I agree with Kim.
Yeah, because, well, I was going to say is that we could also, I mean, for the road acceptance, like I said, this stuff will be completed, and then the next item on the agenda is their bond, and their bond obviously won't be released until they meet those requirements.
Correct. Take advantage of those.
But, yeah, but we can table, table both, as I said, I got this from our engineer at 610.
And so, I just, I'm, I'm, you know, everything needs to be done before I'm contingently doing anything.
Okay.
Sorry.
Tell you 1, 3, and 4. Yep. Can that, just to clarify though, does that have to be done at the next regular meeting, or can that be approved during the work session?
Depends on how they do their agenda, work sessions are actual meetings, but a lot of people have the policy to don't, to not take action, but I think this board is taking it at a certain bound.
When we have one, it's been like a.
Not controversial, yeah.
Just, just wondering, because I, basically, I'll get back with the, with the developer on this, and they should be able to turn this around, and then, and for the, for the March meeting.
If y'all are fine, or we just wait a month?
Either way, I'll definitely bring it to, to be on the work session, but if you guys don't want to make, put that either on like the consent agenda, I think for the preserve, that's what you guys did, because I think it was discuss and consider during the work session, and then put on the consent agenda at the regular.
Yeah, that's fine, as long as it's done.
All right, so what are we doing?
On to number five, tabling 3 and 4.
Okay, next up, we have review and consider adoption of council minutes from the 1722 special meeting, the 11122 regular meeting, and the 12422 special meetings, if we have any corrections or changes.
I just had a question, Austin, sometimes you have like members present, members remote, or have we stopped doing that?
I'm still figuring out how to do that in the new system, because the new system isn't built for that, so.
Okay.
I'm, I'm still working on that.
Okay, I don't have any changes, I was going to say, we need to clarify that, but that's fine, if you don't know how to do it yet.
Yeah, it'll, I'll, yeah, I'm working on it.
Walk faster.
Smile and say, yes ma'am, to know me and to love me, Austin. Yes, ma'am.
Know me and to love me.
We're doing just fine, Austin.
I'll get it done.
I'm, I'm the affirmation guy, you're doing just fine.
Thank you, I'll get it done.
But by the way, we all say, yes ma'am.
You guys make it sound like a pain. Yes, ma'am. Yes, dear.
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so any, any other changes, Bob?
I don't have any, thank you.
Someone has their hand up?
Um, okay, so I am, I am asking you guys to adopt these tonight, since we're having a work session in the end of this month, you guys will start reviewing minutes there again, and then putting them on the consent agenda after that.
Okay, so I'm going to make a mo, wait, are we putting, I thought we.
We haven't, we haven't had a work session again yet.
I know, so we're just adopting them tonight, right?
Yep.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to adopt the minutes from 1722, 11122, and 12422, as presented.
Further discussion, all's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, next up is discussion 2022, village council retreat agenda.
Okay, so this is in your packet, the topics in blue are from last year, topics in red have been added, pretty much we're asking you guys, do you like what's on here, is there things you want to add, things you don't want to talk about?
How about?
There's none on there?
Well, actually, I had a conversation with Kim earlier today, and I would like to, to talk about some ideas that I may have had, I don't know if they'll work or not, but Union County is facing some major infrastructure issues with transportation, and I would like to discuss this while we have the county and some state representative there at the meeting, some ways that we can try to figure out how we can work together to improve Union County's transportation issues, we all know it, Wuma talks about it, everybody talks about it, the roads suck, we know it, but just talking about it doesn't get us anywhere, we need to figure out a plan to, to, to address it, so I'd like to talk to the, all those folks that were there, and see if we can come up with some kind of an idea, in a direction to go, maybe bring forward some ideas, something of that nature, but that's all I have, I'd just like to.
So we'll make a note of that, have that discussion with the county and David Willis.
So will all the, are we inviting planning board and PR and G, or no?
No.
We're having separate meetings, we're having our Twitter meetings, I mean, we can invite them, but we're not going to, remember, we stopped doing that.
I know, it's just, you know, we, it's, it's an open meeting, it's.
Yeah, anybody can come.
You should see our county, it's in this list.
We can have a dedicated.
What they used to do years ago, they all went on a true retreat, and they went somewhere.
We have more people from the county than we do south.
This is a night stay, a night with the beach.
Is, is Park going to be set up for?
That room, that room's big enough.
We got a couple hours away up to Asheville, or whatever, former council to do these retreats, but we, we started being artificially.
Puts the big hotel up at Asheville.
Guard Park.
20 people overdosed up there at a party.
I thought it was just six people, but I saw that.
Is that where you want to go?
Well, you're talking about going, I was.
Way, way out there, huh? All right, so I think this looks pretty good, we assume we will be done, we won't go into Saturday, correct?
That's the assumption.
Okay, because if we go into Saturday, I'll be zooming in.
You haven't done that since at least 2019, so.
But we haven't done this since I've been here.
Okay.
Since Lanning was here.
And we have a, a bunch of questions I would encourage everyone to have for either David Willis or.
The entire board of commissioners, with their planners and their attorneys.
Oh, is that, is that?
There's like 12 of them coming.
14.
I'm sorry, 14.
We might be here Sunday too, huh?
If y'all have questions or topics for the county, the legislators, any of that, y'all can send them to me in advance.
They're bringing their staff too.
Clerk.
I'm trying to get all of that listed on one sheet, so we're not, we're done at the, the best of our time.
You sell phone, you sell power.
I'll, I'll get that out.
What did you say, what's sad?
Small, small cell phone.
I've got it on here to you.
What was it?
Okay.
And if you have any specific transportation issues that you want me to itemize out, it may be good to, if it's just a overall view.
Call Christina, she'd love to chat.
Yeah, I'll give you a call, I'll give you my idea.
Okay, okay.
Have we talked about your idea? I just, no, I, I had this idea yesterday, and I just happened to have Kim's here earlier, and I.
Just curious, how long have you been spending with them?
25 minutes.
Hey, look.
I'm calling him, I'm calling him.
I'm trying to get to your record, Joe.
So Chaplain, the county is coming with their attorneys.
Yes, you want to come?
Yeah, please.
Why don't you bring your staff?
I think we like four, five people.
There's nothing that we're agreeing to or anything that day, so I mean, if you want to come, great, if not, we'll always run stuff by you.
I'm just wondering why they're all coming.
Yeah, it is kind of weird, so this is just for the retreat agenda, and, and I think Wellington's already had theirs, and so did Waxall, they had theirs, I'm just curious if, if they're doing, if they're even invited to them.
We're the big dogs on the block, I guess.
Well, I, I will say, when we talk at Wuma, in fairness, that we probably have more on the plate than any of them do, other than Waxall, which is a whole different.
Yeah, it's a whole different, we're all, yes, we do seem to have a lot more going on.
So you're more than welcome to come.
Yeah, that's certainly.
We'll get free lunch out of it.
I need your lunch, I'll need your lunch order, can I get up with you on that?
They're only coming.
Lunch is here, I'm definitely.
They're only coming hopefully up to a, a range around lunchtime and beyond, so it won't be an all-day commitment, so for you that is.
But they're coming up on the bus or?
Do I still get, do I still get lunch?
Yeah.
They will stay till lunch.
I'm guessing they're carpooling.
I hope they're coming at eleven.
Well, in fairness, in fairness. In fairness, only. In fairness, it wasn't too many years ago that we had absolutely no relationship with county, so this is, this is progress.
So we need to move funds from Powell Bill to pay for lunch?
Yep.
Covid funds are the new Powell Bill.
Okay.
All right, we're good there?
Good there.
Okay, next up, we have open topics. Um, the only thing I, I would like to, I think, a, a couple of things which Andy touched on at the break, but, the one thing I would like to do is, there's talk of this, um, of a lot of Q and A for waste hauling, hauling. I think it makes sense for us to do a Zoom-like capability and announce it to the HOA board members and stuff and say, look, on this date, we're gonna have a Q and A. Submit your questions ahead of time, so we can have a Q and A for everyone to make life easy in this transition. Because I will tell you, I did it already, I've called, if you haven't called already, you're a waste hauling company, if you're not with active. The process was fairly simple. Um, they took a few minutes for them to stop my payments and they just told me to put my garbage container out every, may take a couple of weeks for them to pick it up, but on the pickup day, you put it out. There's gonna be a lot of questions that I think it makes more sense, instead of trying to have a meeting or keeps, maybe do a couple of, a, a Zoom meeting or something, just a thought.
One question that I've had people ask me is, when will they have a new camp?
I've been asked that too.
Yeah, well, I don't wanna get into the topic now, that's what I'm saying is, yeah. I'm just saying is.
Here's the thing, we don't have any of that stuff yet, we're working on it, but we're, I mean, we're, it's coming, is all I can say. Would you have a meeting on February twenty-second with the HOA presidents to go over some questions? The solid waste representatives will be there, they have most of the, the answers for you. However, we have not yet set regulations, those have to be done in an ordinance format. Y'all have to approve them, it is something that I'm working on, but it takes time because it's like a fifty-page document. I just have not had time to deal with it with everything else. So they can come to the February twenty-second meeting.
Okay.
Or they can call in if, if you have the capability of doing something like that. Do you?
No.
For the HOA meeting?
I can work on it.
Um, if that's something y'all wanna do, we can look into having that option, or they can either submit their commentary to, um.
One thing I will note, Mike Gilboy likes to keep those meetings in an hour.
Okay, so let us work on some stuff first then?
Okay, I just, I was throwing it out there because I heard talk of a, you know, there's a bunch of people asking.
We can plan it, not, no doubt, but we, we need to plan it probably in March sometime, so.
And that's fine.
We'll work on that.
That's all I had, and anyone else on open topics? Okay, moving on, agenda items, review of action items.
Okay, uh, Hunter will bring back the Innisbrook Trail Connection discussion at the work session. Will. Well, uh, uh, will bring back the discussion of the flock camera system at the work session. We'll get a, we'll revise the fee schedule, um, have it on the agenda for the next meeting with the change about the small cell wireless facilities. Christina will execute the contracts with Blue Ridge Trail Works and Boom Brush Control. Hunter will get a letter, um, regarding to fireworks to the owner of the parcel adjacent to the school. I will make sure the Union County Board of Commissioners do not come before eleven. That's all I got. Ongoing list.
All right, um, next up, we're review of ongoing action item list.
Let me get my pencil ready.
Nah, I don't have anything.
What? Are you sick?
Got me excited for nothing.
Nah, there's a couple of things on here, but I don't wanna pile on, so we're good.
Yeah, I've already heard about Runway, even that seems to be the hot, hot topic.
I'm excited about that, and they're coming tomorrow, they're gonna show up tomorrow, I just can't wait to see what they're gonna do when they show up.
I better have lights in the back of the truck tomorrow, that's all I can say.
That's what I'm saying.
All right. That said, going forward, council comments. Robert, I'll let you go first.
I'm good, thank you.
You're good? Kimberly?
No, no, it's okay, I'm gonna go last now.
You know what, there was somebody, he should really get mad at me because I would make him go first.
Travis, the public comment section is over unfortunately. So unless y'all wanna allow him to speak.
My hand's been raised for a while, this is Travis Manny, I'm with the developer of Barcroft.
Barcroft?
We tabled that item.
Yeah, we tabled that.
Oh, we, we tabled that item?
Yeah, unfortunately, I wasn't recognized to speak about that item.
But because we tabled it.
We don't, we don't have, we don't have public comment, except at the beginning of the meeting.
Yeah, is it just for public comment?
No, he's the developer.
He's the developer of Barcroft, and we tabled those items.
So.
There's nothing, you, you close the, you close that matter unless you choose to reopen it.
Right, right, yeah, I guess, what they're, what they're telling me is we, we opened that topic and then decided to close it and tape, well, not close it, but table it to another, when are we tabling it to?
Counsel just table it to their next meeting.
To our next meeting.
Until the final, the final such receipt.
Okay, so that's what we've done, Travis, is we've tabled it, so we didn't take any public comment on it.
Or any action.
Or any action for that matter, we didn't, we, there was not much discussion on it at all.
I understand and I appreciate the process, I'm on the board at plenty of work for Weddington and I, I'm very familiar with everything. I just, we've been trying to do, get this resolved since Rohit was here. We, there's some feedback, I apologize, I'm stuttering, but we can pick it up next month.
Okay, thank you. That said, we got, uh, we have council comments.
You, Jamie.
Jamie.
Um, just, I mean, we have a large agenda and a lot of that just goes to staff, thank, thank staff for all you're doing. Law enforcement, you guys stay safe. Unfortunately, there's too many people out there that don't view you guys as, and appreciate you guys for what you do as much as we do. So please stay safe and, um, that's what I got.
Thank you. Wayne?
I have none at all, I said, thank everybody for showing up today.
All right, Wayne, thank you. Andy? Kimberly?
Yes, so, um, so, you know, what everybody just said, the no-no, you know, law enforcement. But I also want to recognize Christina for being our newly credentialed village, like.
As of April.
As of, oh, as of April, so she just got her credentials, which, I don't know what it is.
I see my International City Managers Association.
So she was gonna be credentialed as of April, and that's like a big deal for.
Got a badge.
The village. So I just wanted to say, good job Christina, and we appreciate all your hard work and staff as always, but that's a big deal, so congratulations. You're welcome.
I have a question for you, June, I, to Jill and to Christina both. I'd like to, uh, attend the twenty-second HOA managers, uh, meeting, um, presidents meeting. Because my, uh, president doesn't like to go anywhere, he doesn't, he doesn't think he needs to show up anywhere. And I get all the questions.
So you're gonna attend as, you're gonna be like two-fold.
Yeah.
Representatives.
I mean, I, I've gotta have the answers, I mean.
Can Christina say something?
Can I respond back to them?
Yes, please.
Um, just so, just so you and everyone else is aware, we don't put on these HOA presidents and kings. We're invited to them to participate so they're not village sanctioned events. Um, Mike Gilboy, from my understanding is that.
That's not a problem with Mike.
So.
I just wanna make sure that, uh.
There's not a quorum there.
Quorum and all the other stuff.
Should you put out a, a potential quorum notice?
You don't, you won't need one for that, there's not gonna be, there's not gonna be at least three or four of y'all there.
I'm going. I think Joe's going.
Okay, or is anyone else planning to go?
Joe, Joe said you were, you were gonna go.
Going where?
To the HOA presidents meeting.
Uh, yeah, I'm probably.
That's not a functional quorum, is there anyone else going?
I thought we were gonna already be there, right?
No.
No.
No, you said you're going. That's a quorum then, okay, I will do a potential quorum notice.
But just, just so y'all are aware, if y'all don't hear anything from us, we don't, we don't have anything to do.
I understand that, but I, just other.
Yeah, right.
How many people are gonna show up?
It's on my calendar. Okay, there's, give me comments.
I, you know, I, I really don't have many, I just wanna thank again staff, congratulations Christina and things, and glad you're back at it. Thank you for, um, for all that you do and staff as well. Just a reminder, um, kinda relates with Mason, slow down out there, I mean, had a reminder today with her, that thing going out there today. I was not going that fast.
You're coming in hot.
She was definitely busted already. No, um, it's just slow down, I mean, and it's, I, I saw that and I thought, wow, that's, that's pretty like in your face. And, um, it sucks because we have such a beautiful neighborhood and stuff, but we're doing this to kinda remind people and, and we're putting them at strategic parts of our community, so this wouldn't have to happen if we didn't have people flying through. But a lot of it is non-Marvin residents anyway, so slow it down. Um, and then encourage everyone to, oh, thanking everyone who have already paid with their sponsorship, um, for all of those who've done that. For those who are considering any members and reaching out to, um, any way you can help would be appreciated. I'd like to make this event successful, very excited about Marvin Ridge joining with us, I think it's win-win. And I, I'm very excited about what we're doing with that for this community, and I think it's gonna be a great day that day, so. Thank you all, and then with that, I'll need a motion to move into closed session. Uh, pursuant to NCGS one-four-three-dash-three-one-eight-point-one-one-A-four for economic development. Halls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Bob, I'll call ya. Hey, I'm gonna, ready?
Yep.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to move into closed, open session.
Um, first, halls in favor?
Aye. Say aye, we're back in session.
Hold on one second.
Move back into regular session.
So I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn at nine sixteen PM.
Halls in favor?
Okay, bye-bye, Marino.